May I get a motion for the approval of the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda as written.
Do we care about any, if I may, Mr. Chair, do we care about any order here with the folks that came from, quite a few from North County? Should we reverse the...
Well, I thought maybe they'd like to learn about our parks. Does anyone have it? I mean, is everyone okay with the way everything looks? That's fine. So, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll?
Mr. Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
County Council?
Yes, sir.
This is blinking. It's not on.
Oh, thank you.
Workshop at 2:00 PM Tuesday, April 17th, in session. All right, so public comments, and I would ask everyone to please be aware of the time. We are trying to accommodate everyone with public comment. I'll just put it on the bottom, that's fine. So if you would, please be very mindful of the timer, as well as if there is someone that has just said exactly what you'd like to say, please don't repeat, as we are kind of limited on time with a few things here. So, to begin, Ann Velisys?
I would just say that Mayor Auburn, who unfortunately recently passed, always mispronounced my name, so just, I'm remembering him fondly with that.
I'm the worst in the world.
Okay.
Forgive me everyone.
It's Velisys. Anyway, I'm Ann Velisys. I'm president of the Calmeopsus Audubon Society, which has more than 380 members who are interested and care about conservation. I really want to thank you for holding the workshop today. As you know, we strongly support the land swap and think it's an important win for citizens of Curry County. I want to draw your attention to two sentences in the state park's response that Deputy Director M.G. Deveraux wrote. First, in talking about taking advantage of the investment of staff time, appraisals, and the broad public support for the land swap, he wrote, "It's rare that all these factors align at the same time." So I want to underscore that all these factors are aligning at the same time right now because of previous work that's been done by previous boards with the engagement of the state and with citizens, and that's an important point. I think it is important to take advantage of this rare opportunity that might go away if there is, if there are new state parks commissioners that come on, if state parks decides it has priorities in other more populous parts of the state, or if the parks department just decides that it's a hassle to work with Curry County. Second, in agreeing to a project to work collaboratively with a five-year trails plan as part of this deal, which was one of the ideas that Commissioner Boyce put forth, he wrote, "This would involve better networking among state and county parks units, the Oregon Coast Trail, and result in state investment in routes, services, and overnight services for trail users." So I think that's really a great opportunity for Curry County to build on the success of the state, of the county campground that we have out at Boyce Cove, county campground at Floris Lake, but also to upgrade trails elsewhere in the county. As elected officials and so many engaged citizens here today, I think we can all agree it's really hard to get things done in government for many reasons. This particular deal is now all teed up, and I think we could move forward and be very proud of a very positive accomplishment. And so, we'd hate to see this commission walk away from an opportunity to be the commissioners that get this positive deal done for the future of Floris Lake. And so I urge you to move ahead with it, and really appreciate Commissioner Pash, you reaching out to learn more and get up to speed, given that you're, you know, coming on to this later. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Peg Ryan, Reagan?
So, just under pronunciation, we say Reagan, but that's all right. So Peg Reagan from Gold Beach, and I reviewed the state parks letter as well, and it seems reasonable. I support the land swap, and I really hope the county won't let this opportunity slip through its fingers. Thank you.
Thank you. Vicki Graham?
Thank you for having us speak here. I'm Vicki Graham, and I live in Port Orford. I lived in Langloes for several years and have a lot of friends there, and a lot of them are working today. It's the middle of the week, the middle of the day, so I feel like I'm here helping speak for them, and we really do want this land swap to go ahead. We think it's a really good idea for that area, and I urge you to consider this very seriously and move forward on it. Thank you.
Thank you. George Couplin?
Chairman Commissioners, I'm George Couplin. I'm here with my wife. We're from Brookings, and I want to thank the opportunity to come again before you to say I am in favor of this land swap. This is a great opportunity for our county to deal with the state and the state parks, and I think it's a great opportunity for us to take advantage of. A sign note from this, I live next to Harris Beach Park in Brookings, and they're a wonderful neighbor, and they do great things for the community, and I think this land swap has the opportunity to really continue that partnership. We envision the same type of land use and exchange as beneficial to Curry County, to Brookings, to north of us. We are also proud that the state and the county realize the value of retaining natural areas. These can far outweigh traditional developments. The Oregon Caves National Monument, Crater Lake, Port Orford Head, Humboldt Mountain are all examples of great opportunities, that people saw the future as this being a great opportunity. Again, I thank you for the endeavor, the ability to give my opinion, and my wife and I support this land swap.
Thank you, sir. Gary Garman?
Good afternoon, Gary Garman. Live at Floris Lake. I think the letter that each of you got and hopefully had an opportunity to read could speak volumes to why this is a good decision if you decide to go forward with the state parks' offer. I couldn't put it any better than was put in that letter, and my concerns are that I've heard something recently, that there is some interest in seeing if there might be a private entity or person out there who might have some interest in that, and that's something that needs to occur in order to cross all the Ts and dot all the Is. This issue has been a high-profile issue over the last 10 years. I mean, when they were digging holes out there, apparently without proper permission, it was well documented throughout the entire county. I think the county knows Floris Lake, they know there's 500 acres out here that hasn't been developed. I would hope that whatever process goes forward does not delay the date that state parks has given us, because that may be a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. It's taken 20 years to get something like this done, and I would just hate to see it go by with all the issues relating to developing that property. I would be shocked if someone came out there with a desire to purchase the property for development purposes, that we know it can't be timbered in an economically feasible way. So I just want to add my support to everyone who's spoken and wish that you make a good decision.
Thank you. Mr. Garman? Mr. Garman, would you stay at the mic, please?
Sure.
Just real quick, I've not heard any potential development at all.
I don't know, maybe one of the other commissioners have, I just wanted...
Well, let me explain what has happened, okay? Since I've come on board, I think some of you in the audience may know that I've spent some time with you privately at Lake Floris, and I've spent, I'm going to say, in excess of 100 hours on the Lake Floris project, so that I'm fully up to speed on everything that's happening with Lake Floris and the decisions that have to be made there. But I hope everyone understands that my job is also to all the constituents in this county. To preface my next comment, I will say that my entire ranch that I own here is completely under conservation easement. I am 100% for conserving the natural resources that we have left in our nation. With that said, if what I'm looking more to do is find an interest, and I have put three phone calls out to three different companies, and all three have responded to me, and one company has responded to me on four occasions already with an interest. Interest to purchase the property under a conservation easement and have a company manage that easement and work with the parks department to further that easement and put dollars into the general fund of the county. That is my wish, is that that would make everyone here happy, because you would now have that lake conserved in perpetuity. It would be managed by a conservative corporate company, and the general fund of this county could be, could benefit from that, which would, again, everyone in this county could benefit from. So that's the short story of what I'm working on right now, and if I could do that and put some dollars in the general fund of this county, I would imagine that would probably make everyone happy.
Could you identify who those entities are?
I think right now it's, I mean, well, I have identified them to Mr. Morrow. One of them is General Electric.
Okay.
One of them is Shell Oil Company, and those two are for, and I hear moans already in the audience, and what they are is they are, they all have a footprint that they have to protect. So if they build, General Electric builds a plant somewhere, they have to buy carbon offsets to build those plants. As many of you know, a lot of conservation companies in this nation, including my ranch, which I learned about three years too late, sell those easement rights, or they lease them to these conservation companies, and then they lease those rights to big corporations, kind of violating the deal that we made with them. So I would never do this deal if I knew that this property wasn't going to be conserved with no, in other words, it will be managed as a wild land, the wild that it is. It will never be able to be developed, and that language is all done when you do the easements. And I know that probably isn't going, as I can see, make everyone happy. What I don't understand with that is, if you're getting exactly what you want, the property conserved in perpetuity as it is, with no encroachment on that property to destroy the values of it, and the county is getting finance or resources from that, why is that a bad thing?
I can't answer that without seeing the conservation easement document itself. Do you anticipate a local entity holding that conservation easement? How...
It would probably be an Oregon company, yes. I know of three of them also, and I've contacted two of them. Actually, the company that has the easement on my property, which is Southern Oregon Land Conservancy, they have an interest in that lake as well, and they have an interest in purchasing it.
Have there been discussions about a dollar value?
No. No firm discussions.
All I would ask is that there be full transparency on this issue, so that we feel like we're getting the whole story, and I'm not doubting anything you've said, as the story develops, with the continuing concern that we've heard of other entities having some interest in that property over the last 20 years, and none of it ever came to fruition.
Well, I will promise you this, I'm not going to wait, I'm not going to waste your time and roll this out for another year or two. I've kind of spoken with our commissioners here and asked them for a little bit of latitude here and a little bit of time, because the property's never been marketed, and so we don't know what the value of the property is. I think by marketing it the way we are right now, I think within a few months, we would know exactly what the value of the property is, because a property is worth what somebody's willing to pay for it. Another company that has an interest is Jordan Cove. Jordan Cove has an interest of taking the property and bringing Lake Floris back to the salmon breeding grounds that it used to be, and completely conserving the property as it is now. And I keep hearing moans in the audience, and I don't understand those moans, because if you're getting someone to come in and take this property and conserve it in perpetuity in the state that it's in now, and allow the parks department to come in and put some trails and some maybe dry camps or something like that, if the parks department wants to work with someone like that, or find private money to do the same thing, why that becomes a bad thing?
I was a transactional attorney for 30 years. I can tell you that I hear broad strokes throughout my entire career, the devil's in the details, and until we know the details, it's hard for me to say that's a great idea, a good idea, or a bad idea. I really don't have an opinion on that. I know that it's important that we be told what's happening while it's happening, so that we, if you're correct, and maybe the documents support 100%, then I agree with you. If you're not correct, as an example, Jordan Cove. If Jordan Cove doesn't go through in Coos Bay, are they still interested? Because by the time that decision gets made, the county, state parks will be gone.
And that's what my statement to you a moment ago was. I'm not going to say to Jordan Cove, you know, you've got a three-year right to this property. This is going to be something that's going to be done in the next few months, or we'll give it to state parks. And that, I have since spoken with, or I've written a letter to Chris about this from the state parks, and I've explained to him my situation, and he hasn't responded to me on it yet, because it was just yesterday, but I'm making sure that I'm trying to keep everyone up to speed on this, on what my intentions are. And again, this is, this is yes, it's a board decision, and it is strictly a board decision for the constituents of this county, not Langloes.
Well, there are people here who aren't from Langloes. All due respect.
Let me just finish my thought before everyone gets angry, but the reason that everyone is here and we're doing this is because we want, we understand that you guys want this property and you want it conserved. So that's why everyone is sitting here again today. I want to do this. I want to have the property conserved in perpetuity. If I can do that and put some dollars in the coffers of this county to pay our bills, and my big dream is to have Floris Lake returned to a co-host spawning, salmon spawning grounds, that's a home run for everyone.
And I agree with you. My only concern at this moment is that just the time it would take to get a real appraisal on that property will take us well past the June date that the county, that state parks has given us.
Well, and that's why I've written a letter to Chris, asking him to work with me on it, and again, I don't think this is something that I'm going to want to kick down the road very far. You're either going to get on the bus or get off of it, and if you don't get on the bus, then we'll work with state parks.
Commissioner, at this point, we should probably just continue with public comments and not engage in the dialogue on that. The board is trying to be as transparent as possible, and that is why we do have it on the agenda for discussion amongst the board members later.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was a good exchange, though. I learned a whole lot, because commissioners can't talk, so I learned a lot there.
Mr. McDonald?
It's Dr. McDonald, but that doesn't make any difference. I have to rethink my comments I was going to make after this previous discussion. I was just going to step back a little further and remind you of, when I came to Oregon in 1967, there was a huge battle going on between Tom McCall and others about building a highway on the Oregon, on the North Oregon coast around Nescouen. And coming from Michigan, I was quite amazed that it was possible for a citizen to walk into the Capitol Building and sit down and talk to Tom McCall about that issue. I'm pleased that we're able to come and talk with you about issues. My other comment is that when I came to Oregon, 205 didn't exist, the second bridge across the Columbia didn't exist, and Portland stopped far short of where it is now. 100 years from now, it's going to be all one big city. It's going to be Portland, Salem, Eugene, all the way down, and the treasures that we have now are going to be even more important than they were at that time. So 100 years, if you just think, what are you going to do today that everybody will be glad that you did 100 years from now? I hope that's the way you're thinking. When I hear you talk about Shell Oil and Jordan Cove and others, what's in it for them? And in perpetuity, does that last 50 years? Does that last 100 years? Does that last 200 years? Whatever we do, we have to make sure that it can never be changed. And I see things being changed right now in the Arctic and so forth, as far as oil drilling, that I'm sure some people thought could never be changed. So then, my last question to you is, you're talking about funds for the county, are those funds sufficient enough to override doing it the way that we previously discussed? I presume that they are. So you must be talking about millions of dollars.
I don't know, is it, at this point, that I'm willing to, again, put a dollar figure on that, because that is not something that we've firmed up at this point.
So it would have to be a significant amount of money to not go ahead with what we have?
Well, again, I've also made, I've also made Chris, and I don't want to deviate from this much farther, but I have also made Chris a, written Chris a letter and made him an offer of another avenue to go down with this that the parks department could easily do. So I'm open to everything. I just think there's more value in the property, and I've said this before, as a whole property, not breaking it up into small pieces. And that's why to conserve the entire property as one unit forever, at a minimum, at a minimum, I would do county retains ownership on a 100-year land lease. That would be the minimum I would do. And that's the talks that I'm having.
I trust your judgment, sir.
Mr. Rogers?
I'm Jim Rogers. I'm a retired forester from Port Orford. I've been involved in this issue for more than a decade. I was on the County Natural Resources Committee that went out there and looked it over pretty thoroughly, got a lot of things figured out. To me, it's always been clear that the highest value of this piece of land is for conservation. I think this deal with the state is a good one, and I'd really like to have you continue on the way you're going and get a deal made with the state parks. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Bob Morrow?
Bob Morrow, Langloes. My wife is starting to wonder why I come down to Gold Beach so often, so help me out here, and let's get something in the books that we can count on, like Alternative One from Oregon Parks and Recreation Department. I know we had a conversation on Monday. Thank you each for meeting with my group, my team. Very much appreciated. Since you broke out some names of the companies that you have been dealing with, I did a little bit of research. GE, for example, was concerned with bankruptcy in November. Are they really going to be looking at a cash flow that provides them nothing except maybe offsets? We had Jordan Cove, somebody mentioned here, that are they really going to be spending millions of dollars on Floris Lake if they can't get an LNG facility up in Coos Bay? Probably not.
So you know, they just conserved a 100-acre lake in Coos Bay for co-host salmon. They just purchased it and conserved it within the last couple of months.
Well, that's good news. I'm happy to, and hopefully they could...
It's already done. That deal is done.
And if we can get something like that for Floris Lake, that would be great. But right now, you have in front of you a deal that is 90 acres, and we can have it in the works as of May 1st, if you put that in as an action item for May 1st, your next opportunity, and you still have 410 acres to do all of the things you want to do. Any portion of the, any portion of that property that you turn into a deal, a swap with the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department, for example, will provide funds for the general fund. That 33 acres, the Port Orford Cedar, 33 acres across from the school, I mean, instantly you can sell it, $200,000, bang, it's in. Or you can turn it into a leasing situation, so you have a long-term cash flow, maybe a stables, maybe a shooting range, or perhaps turn it into an educational center with OSU, the forestry program there. Work with them and the Students of Pacific High School. It could be a nature walk or a wayside. You could perhaps use it as a property to trade with some of the other agencies that you're working with. National Forest Service, perhaps. You've got the Elk River Campground on the docket for today. Maybe you could do a swap with them of that new property. You don't have to be locked into it, so don't try so hard for just the 500-acre home run. If you can give me four singles, the 90 acres, the next piece, the next 90 acres that the state parks was interested in conservation easement on, then you're only left with 200 acres. Perhaps a community could get behind that and provide funds for that purchase, instead of trying to go to General Electric, or Jordan Cove, or Shell. I mean, those are names that scare people who care about the conservation of a region. We're talking about the soul of Langloes. We're talking about the soul of Curry County, and all these citizens that came up here today on a Wednesday afternoon during a workday to speak, to be here. I mean, that shows a huge amount of commitment, and you, sir, have been at an event where we had over 200 people, because it happened to be a slightly more convenient time. What was your take from that meeting of 200?
A lot of energy, a lot of commitment, you know? When I hear you say it's the soul of Langloes, maybe the soul of Curry County, I don't think I could disagree with that. I have some, I have some following of, that I just learned here from Commissioner Pash, and I think he's, you deserve the time on this. I don't see any big corporation's going to break a contract that it's spelled out, and you've already made that effort. You know, it's worth giving you the time. I'm following your vision there, and, you know, I'm as committed as I can ever be to keeping it as it is, less fire danger, that's the first thing I think of, and so that's where we are right now. Green Spaces, special.
Yeah, the other comment, too, is I suspect any corporation that comes in, the first thing they will do is look at an appraisal and base the value of that property on the appraisal, and we already know what that is, and I don't think it will change because you have a different potential buyer. I think it'll be the same. So a lot of time spent for not a lot of financial gain to the general fund. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rohrbach?
Commissioners, good afternoon. My name is John Rohrbach. I'm from Port Orford. I'm here today to express my fervent support for the land swap as it stands, and I hope that you allow that to come to fruition.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
John. Seems we are this far along on the conversation on this. Mr. Hopkins, if you wouldn't mind, can we roll this over to the first and move you to second on the agenda? All right?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So do we have any further comments about the, about 4C on the workshop agenda here or for projects? Ms. Commissioner Gold?
I just read through the letters and some of the things going on here, and I noticed in order to just put a road in, and this is according to our previous Roadmaster, it would be $650,000, plus we would have to pay for the easements that, to obtain that. Also, there would be septic issues, there could be cultural issues and so forth. So I don't think putting a road in would be the right way to go. And not only that, we had a task force here in the county that recommended that we swap the land, and also there was a consultant, John Irwin, who did a study and recommended we swap the land, and I'm looking at this long-term. I think this could be a real benefit to the county long-term with ecotourism. The state has agreed to do trails and so forth, and this is one of the big draws. I think Boyce Cove Park could be extended a bit to have more campgrounds and so forth, so that more people could come, and I talked to Josh, and he says he has people lined up to get reservations there, so he's had to turn a lot of people away. So that's my take on it. I think we ought to do it. It's kind of like a bird in the hand is worth two in the bush, so that's my take.
Commissioner Boyce, do you have any further comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, we know it's a long shot, but if you're getting calls back, I think that if we stay with the June deadline, and you come to the board and say, this, Mr. Garner makes a very good point on the transparency, what the fine details, and I, yeah, they would be the first to know, before the commissioners probably, except through Director of County Operations. So just giving you that time, which is six weeks, I'm willing to do that. I'd like to have a weekly report to see how your optimism is going, and you talk about fish restoration...
And, and you talk about fish restoration, forest restoration, of course. I, I perk up real fast. And so that's, that's a good direction to go.
Well, I, I say, I see a downside to putting an absolute deadline on this.
What I'm saying, what I'm offering though, if you have reasonable, legitimate, continued consultation and the public's aware of that, I, I could not, I couldn't not support that.
Do you know who Ray Bloucher is? He's a, he's in Washington.
Unless he rows a drift boat through Blossom, probably not.
He's the first person I brought this up to about Jordan Cove. And I've spoken to him on three occasions about this property. Yesterday I was over in Ms. Ms. Colan's office, looking at, at some audits on some, some of the things that we're going to face in the next few weeks. And my phone rang while I was in her office. And it was Chuck Deister, who is the, the head person on this decision for, for Jordan, Jordan Cove. And it was him on the phone to me personally. And he said, I've heard about this and it sounds very interesting to me. I'd like to know more about it because I want to run it up the flagpole with the board. So this is where this is right now. And can I say that he'll call me back in two weeks? No, I can't.
Understand.
Can I say that, you know, what I would like to do is actually market this. Find a way, and I'd like to talk to maybe Karen Kennedy, who I know in the county, or some other railtors to find a way to market this on a, through conservation companies. Again, Southern Oregon Land Conservancy in my talks with them because I wanted to find out if I do this with a company like General Electric, I need to know that that property is going to be conserved.
So can you explain in detail? I think you're starting to go down this path.
Just let me finish my thought on this though first, please.
So there's a clarity here.
So when I contacted her about this, her, her name is Christie. She's one of the inspectors for this, for this Southern Oregon Land Conservancy. And I think she even knows a few of you because she's mentioned your names. What she said to me was, I, what at first I asked, I said, can I, can I guarantee that if Shell comes in here and says they want to conserve this property and can, and they'll have a conservatory company come in and do the management of it? Can I guarantee, can I get a guarantee that that will be done? And what she said to me was actually a little frightening, but it was also building of strength. She said that every conservation company in this nation contributes to a legal fund, every one of them, every, on an annual basis. And they, she said that legal fund is overflowing with dollars. And if someone were to try and break an easement on a property like this that they have conserved, it would be extremely difficult to do, to pierce that. So all I can go on is, is what professionals that have been doing this for already thirty some odd years tell me that these kind of easements are, are pretty much bulletproof. And that's all I can go by is what people tell me. What I said a while ago, I don't want anyone in the audience to take wrongly. I said, you know, our job is to, is for the, all of the constituents in this county and not just Lake Floris area people. What I meant by that is our job is, yes, to worry about all the constituents of this county. But I want you all to know that we've all included you in this for a reason because it's important to all of us. So I hope no one in the audience took that wrongly. Did that answer your question?
Just a little bit more on the marketing, if you could.
What I would like to do is, is talk to a railtor, a couple of railtors, maybe sit with, with Julie because she's been gone a few days about my thoughts on this. But to, to put it out there to companies that this is what they do. There are, there are a lot of companies in, in our, in our world, much less our nation, that have a lot, Apple, Apple, I think is putting two hundred and sixty million dollars this year into conserving properties around the country, actually around the world. They're doing some conservation in China as well. And to put this property out there, California is wall-to-wall real estate, as is most of the Washington coast now. We have, I mean, this is a, to me, it's a gem. Our, the Oregon coastline is a rarity. In, in another fifty years, it'll be an oddity if it's still conserved. So I think it is imperative for all of us to protect a lot of the land. That's why my ranch is protected. It's imperative for us to do this. But to, to wait a little bit longer and have the possibility of putting a couple of million dollars into our general fund as well, I just, I think it's worth that amount of time to let me kick the bushes on this a little bit and find out. This board will be seated for another twenty-one months unless, God forbid, something happens to one of us. So I think we've pretty much got consensus on this board that we want to conserve this property. The Parks Department, hopefully Chris is a reasonable man, the Parks Department. I know they may change directors, they may change their management. But they've been, this has been talked about for years. Three years ago, Jay Tross almost traded most of this property for McVeigh down in Brookings. Maybe that can be put back on the table. Maybe some of the airport land around the Cape Blanco Airport could be put back on the table through Parks Department, which is areas that they really aren't looking to move forward right now. All I'm asking for is a little bit of time to, to kick the bushes on this and see what we can make of it. And if we can put some money in the general fund or make a better deal and conserve the entire property, that's all I'm trying to do. Anything further from anyone?
I have nothing else.
Mr. Gold?
Today?
No, I'm good.
All right, thank you. So let's move on to, seems we've got this on here. Why don't we do, why don't we do C first with you? If you want to finish up on, on any comments on C?
Uh.
No?
No, Josh didn't have any.
Okay, I just wanted to know if he had any comments on it. So all right, so why don't we go to projects of four A? Forest Service Camp, Campground Partnership. Yes. It's probably easier to use the key, just the sideways key there. Of course, he's younger. He's more technical than we are.
Don't you forget it.
Okay. Josh Hopkins, Curry County Parks Director. We're here today to discuss the possibility of partnering with the US Forest Service and changing management to county management of three campgrounds at the Elk River. We would be looking to get a long-term lease to do this, preferably of twenty years is really what I'm shooting for. We would accomplish this by using some variation of a special use permit based off of the Organic Act, typically called like a one fifteen permit. This isn't something that's new to the state of Oregon, to the Forestry Department. Plenty of other counties already have similar agreements in place. Those counties report, when I've spoken to them about it, that they find these agreements are very mutually beneficial. It's a situation to where you can pool your resources between two agencies whose ultimate goal is protection of public access to recreational facilities and activities. One of the counties that I generally pull from for this type of agreement, specifically because they did get a twenty-year lease for their agreement, would be Lane County. It's an example that they were able to open up and reopen a formerly closed campground, the Archie Knowles Campground. And they got the permit they needed. It's open. They report it's running smoothly. The reason I'm real interested in the twenty-year lease option is because that provides the county with the state RV license fees. There's a lot that goes into what qualifies for state RV license fees. You've got to have fresh water in some form or fashion. You've got to have restroom facilities, markers out for your picnic tables, sites, fire pits. And if you're in a situation to where you're taking over management of an area, it has to be a twenty-year lease. Else you don't get the state RV fees. With these sites, the twenty-year lease and state RV fees, the state RV fees are calculated with a complex formula that I don't quite understand. Basically, they take the amount of campsites the county has, the amount of population the county has, and some variation, they understand how many county residents own RVs, recreational vehicles, or how much use happens in that county of recreational vehicles. Put it all together and they give us an allocation every single year that is for designated in county parks. This allocation ranges greatly, but typically we see a range per campsite in Curry County, under Curry County Park Management of the state giving us seven hundred to a thousand dollars per site. This is important for these types of agreements because it helps offset the operational costs and minimize the risk that the county has. With these three campsites in question, this would be the first year the Forestry Department is actually charging for these campsites. They've been used as open, free, sort of dispersed campsites in the past. So there's no real comparables to look back on to say, oh, we know it's going to make X amount of dollars every year. If we add this to it, maybe it'll make this amount. So that's why I'm really pushing the twenty-year lease because it virtually will eliminate the risk once we're able to update the water systems, which is the only thing these campsites really need to be added. Some variation of a small hand pumped well, as long as it's potable water, we're good to go with the state RV license fees. You know, these are successful partnerships. Everyone says that it's great for the public trust. It shows a lot of community and a lot of organization and just a lot of goodwill between agencies working together for common good. And it's the type of deal that if we were able to put in place, we'd be able to hold up to other agencies out there we may be looking to partner with in the future as an example of we actually have something that we are doing that works with another agency. The campgrounds in question are the Sunshine Bar, Butler Bar, and the Laird Lake Campgrounds. Laird Lake? Laird, sorry. Just going through some pictures real quick. This is the Butler Bar Campground. This is just a picture of the creek. Elk River is like one of the most beautiful places in Curry County. It is still completely wild, horribly scenic in like the greatest ways. It's a huge site that's got a huge draw for different recreational activities between fishing, camping, hiking. That's one of the restroom facilities. And this is Will.
How many acres is this facility?
Nice photo, Will.
Acres, not sure. They're typically smaller in size. The campsites currently, Sunshine Bar has six sites, Butler Bar has seven sites, and Laird Lake has four sites. With the ability, one thing we've talked about with the Forest Service at this point is there is the option of possibly being able to add one or two more sites to most of these campgrounds, change sites around to designate more of a hiker biker feature. Elk River is designated as a scenic biking corridor. So that gives us a large pool of outdoor recreational activity that we can be promoting with these campgrounds. Additionally, with Laird Lake, one of the campsites looks perfect to turn into a group camp facility. Small group camps, big group camps, they're a huge draw for these things. We see it over in Edson Creek would probably be the closest example. They have several twenty-five person group camps and they're pretty much full throughout the summer because of their facilities. So it does have the vaulted pit toilets. All the campgrounds have similar vaulted pit toilets. These toilets currently get pumped once a year. Nice thing about vaulted pit toilets, they last like eighty years with very minimal, minimal maintenance. We don't have all sorts of reporting things, constant stuff that we're having to do with like our current campground, Boy's Cove. So the vaulted pit toilets are kind of the standard. Here's the kiosk area they kind of have place. Basically, we'd install an Iron Ranger to start collecting the fees. We'd really hope to get some sort of camp host onsite while doing this type of stuff. And part of their job would be running this route to make sure that everyone's in play. And then that's the sign for Butler Bar. I would add somewhere around this sign saying Curry County Parks Presents, Butler Bar, National Forestry Campground. Again, we're trying to really promote the idea that this is a joint, good-natured thing for the county, for the citizens, teamwork. Another example of the restrooms.
It looks nicer than the-
Yeah, some of them, you know, depends on how the shade or if they've taken it down. And that's still Butler Bar. And that's just one of the campsites at Butler Bar. One of the nice things that you find with these forestry campgrounds is although you have your hazardous tree surveys you have to get done, you have some brush thinning that needs to be done. They're kind of like this for the most part, open, spacious, very private. It's a big draw for people that are looking for that type of camping. And additionally, you don't end up in a situation like we have at Lobster Creek and Boy's Cove with large fields that constantly need mowed, all sorts of active, every single day type of lawn maintenance. You know, you just kind of manage it. We're not making Disneyland. It's, you know, as wild as it can be, but within reason. And this is Laird, Laird Lake. This lake is stocked by ODFW. It's got trout in it. Some of the reports I've read online mention that there's twenty-five inchers in there periodically throughout the year. One of the things about this lake is it's the headwaters to the Elk River. So if we're able to secure and continuously preserve a headwaters to one of our fisheries, I think that's a big win on any form of fashion. The other part about this lake is, right here's site number four. This would be the site we'd be looking at possibly turning into a group camp. Very large, very spacious. This lake gets crystal clear during the summer. It's supposed to be a beautiful spot. I plan on going up there this summer myself. One thing we've talked about just real quick while I was onsite with the Forest Service reviewing these campgrounds is we have the possibility of adding an ADA fishing dock right off into this lake. If we're wanting to show the community that we are putting the best foot forward for this type of agreement, we're putting in the money to help keep this partnership and we're trying to increase visitor usage. With this lake being a pretty prime little fishing lake, any form of ADA type dock would be a big draw for people to continuously start heading up there. Some of our Parks Committee members, one of them is from the North County area. They go up to Elk, or Laird Lake, Laird Lake, sorry. They go up to Laird Lake almost every year for different Mountain Biking Association events and everything like that. They mentioned that, you know, if we were to get this into a group camping thing, they see their friends, their families, everyone they know in the Port Orford, Langloes area, really starting to take advantage of that because it's a great kids' lake. You know, it's relatively safe as far as water can be safe. There is a small trail around the lake that would need a little bit of rehab. But there's a lot of draw to it. That's the single restroom facility at the lake. Again, vaulted pit toilet, perfectly working order, easy to maintain. And it's meets the standards that we'd need. This is the Sunshine Bar Campground. Again, with the sign, we'd want to add some variation of Curry County Parks Presents. The idea, again, we're just presenting it. With the Sunshine Bar, it's on the one on the bottom of the route up from the Elk River. It goes Sunshine Bar, Butler Bar, and Laird Lake. Again, vaulted pit toilet. Some of them get more sun. That's why they look a little bit better because there's less moss growing on them. You just never know. Again, kiosk, you stick down your vaulted or your Iron Ranger. You're up for business. You put the instructions there. One thing that people that camp in forestry campgrounds are used to is maintaining themselves. As far as they pay the fees, they do all this. We see it at, you know, Little Redwood Campground, Biller Nook Bar. They know what they're doing. It's not as much of a, we have to train them to do it type of a thing. They see the Iron Ranger, they see the sign, they are used to it. With these campgrounds, there is the aspect that, that's just a little picture of the creek, unless I'm cycling through again, I am. So with these campgrounds, there is the aspect that since it has been used as primarily, since it has been used as a free service and, you know, not regulated as much as the other campgrounds, during the first season, we were going to have some pushback from the people that are used to using it. It's nothing we can't handle. I've reached out to the county code enforcement officer, informed him of some of the stuff that we might encounter as far as making sure we're keeping up with the forestry mandated residency state stuff, making sure people are paying. He's on board to help out as much as he can to have a, someone that can actually go up with us when we have these type of incidences. He'd be able to cite them. He'd be able to, you know, go through that process for us. So that's all teed up nicely. You know, at this point, we've just had a few conversations with the Forestry Department. We've been looking at trying to get something like this going for a couple of years. And we're at the point between, it's kind of a nice timing between the current vision staffing goals that the Forest Service Department has is lining up with the county park staffing and its goals as well. That's fluctuated a lot. One thing that the other county parks systems has mentioned is that part of the reason they all had such a long process and hard time getting these agreements in place was turnover. Or somebody new comes in on like a forestry side, like they get a new ranger and they want to take it in a different direction. So it's kind of one of those things, now's the time to move forward with this type of agreement. At this point, the parks would like to hear any of the concerns from the board and see if we can get a consensus to move forward to see what type of deal. We do have members of the Forest Service with us in the audience. They can possibly answer some questions if you guys have any and maybe be able to provide some insight.
I have a quick question. What is, have you done a, a budget for this? What's it going to cost to get these open, get them up and running?
I'm working on that right now. Our main cost would be instituting some variation of Iron Rangers onsite. In talks with the Forest Service, they have mentioned there are numerous spots that they have old Iron Rangers- And talks with the Forest Service, they have mentioned there are numerous spots that they have old Iron Rangers that they would be okay with us pulling out. It kind of helps them and just reusing that. Additionally, they've got some dispersed camping sites that they may be looking to stop doing dispersed camping at, which would provide us with a few extra pitting tables and benches. But it's really not that big of an investment to get this going. As far as staff time goes, one nice thing is this is located along our travel path. We go to Boy's Cope. This is 40 miles from Boy's Cope up the road and 15 mile or 20 miles up the road or up the Elk and 15 miles from the campground itself. When I met with the forestry service up there, we met at the fish hatchery at 10 o'clock, ran the route, and I was at Boy's Cope by one. So it's not that big of a deal outside of our own travel corridor. Reoccurring cost for this is septic pumps. That's where our main reoccurring cost would be. It's done yearly and I don't suspect it would be done more than yearly, even with increased usage. I say that because I've looked into other agencies that are using vaulted pit toilets. State Parks has vaulted pit toilets all along the Oregon coast at Arch Rock, Wells Head, and then Lone Ranch. All of those get hundreds of thousands of visitors a year. They only pump theirs once a year. So they hold up well and it's, there's a reason vaulted pit toilets are kind of used across the parks and recreational field.
One more, one more question for me. If you were to, if we were to say move forward with this one, what would be your target date to hopefully have these, if and Forest Service worked it out, have them open in our custody?
So that's more of the nitty gritty that we haven't launched into yet without making sure the board would be on, okay with this. Obviously, there is a process to it. There's our own county process of going through this type of thing, council review, everything along those lines.
Are we looking at this fiscal year or next, next year?
I would hope to get it launched.
Forest Service moves really fast.
Yeah. You know, and they'd be able to give more of a guidance. I would hope to get it done sooner than later. Like I said, we're at a timeframe to where the pieces are in place to move forward. It's just a matter of actually getting down and figuring out how that's going to look.
I think some of the parks in this county are going to do well this year because Loon Lake's closed for the year.
Loon Lake's closed for the year, so Floris Lake will probably see a bump. Also, Bullards Beach is going to be closed over the winter because they're redoing their septic lines. We might have a better off-season. But that's regardless, the parks are going to exceed expectation because they've been doing it since 2014.
Commissioner Gold?
Commissioner Pash already asked two of the questions I had. My third question is, would you set up a reservation system similar to what you have in Boy's Cope? Because I think that's been stupendous.
It has, and you know, we'll go over that later in our other parts of this meeting. But no, not for these campgrounds, especially not starting out. If we did a group camp, we'd probably set up something similar to what we have with our Lobster Creek in-house because it's easier to manage one type of thing. But for these, you leave them like most forestry campgrounds out there is first come, first served. That's the same way like Edson and Six's Runs. It's a common way for them to run. What this actually gives us is for when we're turning away dozens of campers at Boy's Cope, it gives us a spot we can actually send them. One thing that I'd really look for in getting more visitor promotion into this area is just signage. If you added signs along the county section of the road below the fish hatchery, letting people know that these campgrounds are five miles ahead, six miles ahead. That's a big draw for these tourists that are coming to our area that aren't really known for the area. And they don't currently have those types of signs really throughout.
You were mentioning to me when I was talking to you yesterday that Loeb Park is doing the reservation system now, and that's why I asked that question.
Yeah, and it makes sense for Loeb to possibly be looking into doing a reservation system.
They're bigger.
They're bigger. They're right next to, you know, a population base. And Loeb has been first come, first served since its dawning of being Loeb Park. Boy's, or Harris Beach has had a reservation system. They're normally booked out nine months in advance. So what happens at Loeb is it's used by a lot of the locals or people that go to Harris Beach looking for a spot, get sent up to Loeb. But they are, from what I heard, looking at switching over to a reservation system. How that's going to look, I'm not sure. They also have a great infrastructure with the state parks for the reservation systems. We could, with our current system, add other county campgrounds and stuff like that onto it. It's not that big of a process. But, you know, that's not something we'd be looking at doing with this.
Would our Forest Service like to maybe comment on a timeline? If this were to happen, how long it may take to, to come to fruition?
Commissioner Pash, Bob Hemus, River Permit Manager for Gold Beach. If we got the approval to go ahead, we would expedite and shoot for a 30 to 60-day.
How long's the approval process take though?
It shouldn't take much longer than that. It should go quick.
Commissioner Boyce?
Go ahead, Ann.
Yeah, let's let Ann talk. Absolutely.
Up to the microphone, you have to go.
Come on.
I'm Ann Delisis, and I'd actually, I'd still like to ask you a question in my capacity serving on the Siskiyou Rack, which actually did, did consider all the campground fees for the Forest Service over the region last year. And one of the things you mentioned was the need to add water systems into Elk River campgrounds. That wasn't when you were asked about the expense to the county. Can you comment on what you mean by adding water systems? And also, and yeah, how that's, maybe Bob, you could talk about how the Forest Service sets its fees structure and if the county then would be, instead of the Forest Service setting its fees, which I believe is a statutory thing, would the county then be able to set its fees based on what it wants to do?
So, let's go ahead and start with the current fees for the sites. I believe that they approved, it's either $10 or $12 a day. I think it might be 12. As it stands, that's a perfectly logical fee for these facilities as, because they don't have water, they don't have power, and, you know, they're more dispersed and further out. Moving forward, you know, I wouldn't really be looking at raising these fees without investing into the campgrounds themselves. The 20-year thing with the state RV licensing fees gives us a way to invest into these campgrounds by bringing them in. And we really, as a county, want to invest in these campgrounds to make sure that the public understands we're out there trying to make these better, trying to make accessibility better. As far as updating the water systems go, there's no power onsite, so it really limits what we could do. Obviously, we could put in some variation of a solar paneled well with a gravity-fed chlorinator. Other campgrounds have done this in the past. I think Little Redwood and Checo actually used to have one. Edson actually has some variation of that same system, but problem with that is similar to what's happened with the Edson one, vandalism. People steal your solar panels because it's, you're not up there looking at them all the time. So the way we'd look at this is the same way that, you know, a lot of these forestry campgrounds are right now, kind of like, what's that house? Lutum. Kind of like Lutum House. They have hand pump wells and that's what Butler Bar actually has one that's in. It needs its pump back on. I've talked to our current water testing people. It stopped getting tested in from Butler Bar in like 2005. But that's a situation where we'd be able to just put the handle back on the well, test it up, make sure it's all clean. Everything's ready to go, go through whatever Curry Health EQ type of requirements for that. And we'd be able to have water right there because it's one of those things, you purge the system. There's a couple of ways to disinfect any sort of well, and then you have a hand pump well system. That's what I'd be looking at installing at these campgrounds is small shallow wells with hand pumps. Nothing with power or anything like that. That would meet our requirements. And then they go on to the same thing that we do at every county park. We, all of our parks that have water systems in place, we submit water sampling and everything like that to the labs. If you go to, I think it's yourwater.org, you can Google any sort of facility or anything like that. It'll tell you everything about their water systems and when their samplings go in. So getting those wells in place on the other two campgrounds is where we'd have our main expense of that. That's an expense that we do it because then it qualifies for the state RV licensing fees and it's an expense that pays for itself once the allocation comes in for them. With that being said, I know that the wellheads themselves with the hand pumps are about a hundred dollars. I did reach out to several pump companies to kind of figure out the price range of them, but none of them have gotten back to me at this point. Most of them kind of have the same general thing, like we won't really know until we actually go out and look around because, you know, the difference between drilling a 50-foot well and having to drill a 150-foot well, they charge it by the foot. So it's not really something they can estimate until they actually get down to that point of estimating. Does that answer your question, Ann?
Commissioner Boyce?
I only have 11 questions. No, two. First of all, very nice presentation. Thank you. A rough idea on the elevation and then also, did I hear you say, well, I saw snow on one of those pictures, but did I hear you say you will have one camp post manage all three of those or did I miss that?
So ideally, we would get a camp post up there. It takes a lot to get camp post, I'm sure. Bob would be right on there, especially camp posts and sites like that that don't necessarily have all the features that a lot of people are looking for, like, you know, accessibility to power. It's similar to what we go through when we're looking for a camp post up at Lobster Creek because it's not something that has a lot of services. So you're always looking for a camp post to put in. The state RV licensing fee will more than cover the cost of a camp post plus basically all operational cost of the campground, leaving us with the occupancy on top of that. So we would be looking to put in a camp post. The idea would be put one camp post in. Those campgrounds aren't located that far from each other. And as a part of their, you know, daily routine, they just go up and make sure. And really, all the camp post needs to do or most part is just be eyes and ears and a presence. It's the presence that really is needed for these campgrounds. I'm not looking for a camp post to go out there and knock on windows and try and issue citations, but it's more of a, oh, we have this camper that's been there. It's been 17 days. They're aware of the 14-day stay limit. Here's their license plate. Here's this. Then I could take that to county code enforcement officer and we can schedule a time to run up to see what's going on with this individual. You know, there's a system in place that you just work out the policy for that. But yeah, we'd get a camp post if we can. That's just.
All right.
I have a question.
Ms. Melzer?
Josh, the county, with the property task force, they had talked about a piece of property along the Elk and turning that into county park. How does that tie in with these properties? Does it basically make a long string of camp sites along the Elk?
Yeah, so one of the properties that we've looked at for developing into a campground is up the Elk River. It's about a mile down from the fish hatchery up there. It's a 12-acre parcel of which I'd say 10 of those acres are on the opposite side of the road, up a hillside that we can't really do anything with. But an acre, two acres is down along the creek. It would make a, we've talked about doing it as possibly a boat launch type area, but there's one right up the river at the fish hatchery, so it kind of doesn't make that much sense. But we've also talked about that being a spot of putting in a camp post because it's a lot better location just because it's closer to actual people and it's closer to facilities. It's something that we could build up. There's power and everything like that. So if we were to go through with this, that would be one of the properties. We'd start evaluating with the Parks Committee and everything else like that to see about getting something in place. I think the best thing we could do for that area due to the size is probably put in a camp post with either just a nice day use area with hiker biker stations and then hiker biker stations up at the top of the road or like at the top of the campground so that we're really promoting this hiker biker scenic corridor type thing. I keep saying hiker, but it's more of a biker scenic corridor. And if we're putting in stuff like bike stations and everything like that, it creates a scenario where, you know, people come to this region to bike the Elk River and stay at the little campgrounds and stop it. Know that when they get from A to B, if there's something wrong with their bike, they can actually fix it onsite. Those pace, or stations vary in cost, but they're not horribly expensive. But yeah, I would look into doing either a day use area or possibly turn that into a nice, large group camp facility for group camping.
So could we ask you to give us a breakdown on a budget estimate for what it would cost to open these?
I don't have that at the time, but yeah, I could
No, I'm saying that could we ask you to do that?
That would be a part of the process going forward with, before we're getting into all the permits and everything like that.
So yeah, if we could, if we could see that next, it would be good. Any further, anything further on this topic?
I'd like to have one of his shirts, but I don't know if I got credit or not.
All right, moving on to 4C, I'm sorry, 4B, which is the Social Security Bar.
One moment, please.
Bye, Will. Thanks, North County.
You guys don't want to stick around? Stuff gets super fun.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay, so, Social Security Bar update. Here we have a situation where in August of 2018, I brought in front of the previous board the idea of establishing a campground at the Social Security Bar in Brookings. I did go ahead and attach as a part of the packet, the previous board information, just because I know we have a new board. We're looking at, you know, turning the Social Security Bar into a Curry County Park public camping facility. The way we'd go about doing this is either work towards long-term ownership of the bar access point, which is owned by the city of Brookings, or do some sort of long-term lease with them. Currently, the city of Brookings has indicated they are interested in looking at both options, but they're more interested in the long-term lease. Obviously, with the long-term lease, we have more of a risk of what we develop into that type of a scenario. So if we're looking at a long-term lease, it would need to be a very resolute long-term. I'm not talking 20 years. I'd be looking at something more than that type of a thing. The Department of State Lands is still ready to see a proposal on allowing for us to lease the land from the Department of State Lands to use for recreational vehicle camping. The main hurdle with that is that they have their own policies in place that do prevent vehicle camping and everything like that on their bars. So a lot of this project hinges on them giving some sort of exemption to the county parks to allow for that. They've indicated that they are willing to see a proposal on this. They're willing to entertain the idea of doing an exemption. It's just a matter of actually putting this together and taking it forward. With the Social Security Bar in general, it's a place that has been a headache for the local area for many, many years. Every couple of years, it comes up in the city board meetings and everything about that. No one's really had quite an answer. The citizens around the bar want something done because currently it's a lawless area with weirdly mixtured of whose jurisdiction's what type of a thing. So a lot of the locals in the area have people running four-wheelers at 2:00 in the morning, partying out on the bar. And the idea would be that by putting a camp post onsite, putting it as a county park and turning it into a camping facility, that behavior would go away. Obviously, just like anything else, there's going to be some residual pushback at first, but it doesn't take long for that behavior to really kind of fix itself. It's a good opportunity. It's one of those things we've looked at doing similar things, similar places, but this would be probably one of the most profitable things for the county parks to look into, simply based off of its location being next to Brookings. There are some comparable campgrounds out there that do strictly bar camping. The Redwood, Miller and Nook, which are located 15 miles up from the Social Security Bar. Again, one thing you run into with forestry campgrounds is there's no signs letting people know that the Redwood, Miller, Nook or anything like that are even up there past Loeb. So these numbers are virtually based off of either people that know it's there or the public locals that are using it. Little Redwood Campground's a huge campground draw for the locals. Forest Department's actually looking to reopen the Little Redwood Campground now, which would be great. But, so these bar camping totals for the Social Security Bar, I think are well closer to the actual yearly totals that those campgrounds are bringing in due to its size, its location. And we'd run into a situation to where we're in between Harris Beach and Loeb State Park. So when Harris Beach is turning away its overflow, they're passing us to go check on Loeb. When Loeb's sending them back down, then they disperse out camp on the county roads, camp on ODOT. We'd end up being this catch-all for those type of campers. With bar camping, just be dry camping on the bar. We're not putting in anything permanent, no wells, no weird power situations, anything like that. So we'd end up in a situation where people camp there for a few days and go on. We have our own regulations as far as what we can do for stay limits and everything like that. So at this point, I really just wanted to take a second because before moving forward with staff time and everything like that to get this project moving and working with proposals. Part of what I was directed to do at the last meeting when it came in front of the board was get the Parks Committee's input on it. The Parks Committee, the meeting was in April or August. The Parks Committee's first meeting was in January. So in January's meeting, I went over the project with them and they agreed that, yeah, I'd recommend them to move forward with it. At this point, I just wanted to take a second and see what the board might have as far as problems with it, share some of the comparables to it, some of the expected cost with it. These costs will kind of fluctuate throughout the year. Like with the weekly trash, it's nice that we can get a weekly trash service there. But then during the winter months, when it's less of a season and everything like that, we'd really only be getting trash picked up once every couple of months, kind of like what we do at Boy's Cope. So that's harder to kind of judge, but realistically, you know, this on paper looks good. It's just a matter of, the thing really depends on the proposal with DSL. If we don't get that locked in, I'm not sure how Uh, if we don't get that locked in, I'm not sure how well we'd wanna move forward with the city, since, you know, our main focus for here and main moneymaker will be the bar camping. In the original paperwork, I kinda proposed a generalized build plan of the campground. Year one, we'd establish a camp post site and access point, uh, try to add power and city water and trash services, temporary restroom facilities, and charge for dry camping and vehicle bar. Uh, you know, some of that, maybe we don't do year one as far as like getting power in, but we have ways to power camp posts without having them actually plugged into a grid. Uh, and as far as city water goes, there's different ways we can do. Nice thing about this location, city does have a water going all the way up that way. So we don't have to invest in drilling our own big well to power an entire campground like we do up at Boy'scope. We'd be able to plug into the city, and then if we wanted to expand what we offer as far as like showers or anything like that, we could do a metered use system with coin-operated type stuff to kinda offset the cost of that. And then, we'd basically collect the vehicle bar camping fees for a year or two. Then we'd move on to the next phase, which would be adding a permanent restroom facility, looking for like a vaulted pit toilet style situation like at the other forestry campgrounds. They're built to withstand flooding, wildfire, everything else under the sun. And then, you know, year five, around that general idea, we'd have collected fees. We got more of a structure in place. We'd be able to move forward to start building up on the actual city land and putting in a permanent campground-type facility. So that's pretty much what I got at the moment for this. I'm really just kinda seeing if the board is on board with looking forward and taking this further, or what type of things they'd wanna know before moving forward with any sort of proposal to these other agencies.
Commissioner Gold?
Well, let me just say I'm very impressed with your, your planning and so forth, and, and in order to move forward for me, I'd have to know, have a pretty good idea what the cost is gonna be. But I, I think what you're doing as far as looking into the future is really good.
So with the cost, we do have some variation of cost estimate down here, are things that we do expect. Other costs that I can kinda tell you just offhand, because of looking into it, bolted restrooms type of things being delivered to our region, uh, range between forty-three to fifty thousand dollars, and that's in permitted, dropped in, built, everything ready to go. Uh, and then, once we had that restroom in place, we'd remove any of this in it, temporary restroom structures. Uh, the restrooms come ADA standard, which is always nice. Uh, we'd probably have to maybe look at some grading to make sure it's, easement's there. But, so, that would be like a year three cost. In the meantime, operational cost of this campground, uh, just looking at what a camp post is probably gonna be our most largest cost, but a camp post is definitely needed. This is an area that we wouldn't have as much of an issue getting a camp post, because of its, it's still got self-reception, it's got internet reception. Uh, so, thirty-six hundred bucks a year is pretty much what we pay our camp posts. They're contracted at about three hundred dollars a month. That would be our main cost. Taking it forward, I've ran some of these numbers numerous times, and I keep coming up somewhere between sixty-five to seventy-five hundred dollars, possibly for the entire year running this facility. I think it'd be less, just because we'd be able to pick and pull when we're getting septic and everything like that. But I fully expect these facilities to make, you know, like I was saying, closer to the total of what this is. One thing to look at with the Redwood, Miller, and Nook is they have a small season. They only charge for camping, I think it's May first through the beginning of September or the end of September. We would be looking at seasonal camping here as well, because we don't want people on the bar during flood season. But we'd be looking at a longer season, just because we can. And there's a need in the Brookings area for people that are still coming here, looking for places to camp. Once the campground itself was built, it would be a huge draw. It's got a built-in off-season base, which is something you don't see. Currently fishermen camp in the area up at Loeb and drive down to the Social Security Bar every single day to go fishing. We'd be able to really key into that. Again, once you get campgrounds in place and everything like that, the state RV licensing fees kick in, which would definitely offset the operational cost of the campground. With that being said, with, you know, even if we're at the higher end of a, you know, seventy-five hundred dollars a year type of thing to run this campground, there's still plenty left over from the total to make it worth our time. One thing you're always looking at is how much of a staff time investment comes into this. Nice thing for the county at the moment, I work or live in Brookings. This is a situation where I can start my day, in my day, at the campground. So it's not a situation to where we take over a campground in some far reach of the county that requires us to drive five or six hours out of our way to go maintenance. There's more of an access to this type of a thing.
How many sites did you say were on this prop, would be able to be on this property?
So we've looked at some of the things done in the past. Tony Barron, the current, geez, he's got a new title, uh...
He's with the city.
Legal counsel, know what his title is now.
Brookings Public Works.
Director of Public Works. Uh, he was the Parks something, uh. Anyways, Tony Barron, a couple of years back, I think in like two thousand twelve...
I just call him J. Tros' boss.
J. Tros' boss.
Just off, off the top of your head, what do you, I don't need the exact number.
So, he put it into a CAD program and came up with kind of a generalized idea what a campground would actually look like on this facility. He put in, I think, about sixteen spaces, nice little looped out, and then it had restroom facilities. They were looking at establishing some sort of, uh, above-ground septic cooling system, which...
Yeah, the pump stations, yeah.
Yeah, way too much to operate. Uh, but, I would, you know, entertain what he did. I think I might actually have it here.
So why would Brookings wanna give this up?
So it's not really in their park system for what they're doing. They are updating their master plan. Uh, I'll get back to that real quick.
Okay.
But, uh, so this is what Tony Barron had done in the past for it. You can see there's, uh, sixteen sites in here that he put, and just kinda looped it out. That's something similar we could build. I would probably hesitate to put sixteen in. I'd be looking at maybe ten, fourteen, somewhere in there. You don't want people right on top of each other. You want it to be nice, you want it to be spread out. Uh, the more you add, the more headaches it kinda becomes. But with a site like this, the idea would be, these sites would end up being used by tent users a lot of the times, and a lot of recreational vehicle users would just go down on the bar. Uh, people are already down there. Uh, so, I'd be looking at ten, ten to twelve probably sites for this area. And that would be pretty good as far as getting state RV license fee to offset those types of costs and everything like that.
Alright, thanks.
Uh, and then, as far as why the city would want to get rid of this property, it went, we went over in the last meeting, when Director Tros was able to show up, he mentioned that it's an area that they're currently not really engaged in developing. One thing, big difference between, you know, the city's Parks Department and the county's Parks Department, is the county's Parks Department's set up to run campgrounds. The city's Parks Department doesn't really have the infrastructure in place to do that. Additionally, the city's got more of a commitment to the citizens of building open space recreational facilities. We're talking baseball court fields, you know, trail systems in Azalea. Uh, they are looking at updating their master plan, and they've been in that process. Uh, it was recently in the paper that they had a lot of good ideas as far as different hiking trails in the area or fitness trails. You know, that's more of like what you see from a typical city Parks Department. With this location, it's outside of city limits, but it's their property, it's in their urban growth boundary. But it's more of a headache for them, because they don't really have much plans to develop it. And they get a lot of calls about it from the local residents. Another part of this is the local residents have came to the city numerous times, asking for a camp post type situation, or even negate the bar, or anything like that, because they're sick of the activity. So this is a, one of those rare situations where you end up with, uh, public support on your side, because they wanna have it. In the original meeting we had back in August, the owner of Stephen's Storage sent the letter of support for this project. She would be the most impacted, because her business and her home is right at the bar. And she's in support of this, because she wants to curb the actions that are going on there. Uh, one of the things she mentioned to me that stuck with me is she understands a campground has noise, but it's a different kind of noise, compared to what goes on.
So, quite, another question I have for you, um, if the city of Brookings wasn't looking to do anything with this, and we knew about it last August?
Uh, we've...
Commissioner Boyce?
Yeah, way before that.
Yeah.
I think Brookings...
So why wouldn't we have wanted, why wouldn't this county have wanted to maybe negotiate a trade with this?
We've been working on that.
We, we gave them an airport, why not work out these kind of trades? And this is what I'm talking about, about a working board that is looking for the future of the county? This, these are things that could have been negotiated, um, that, that should have been negotiated when we gave away an airport.
Uh, I can't necessarily dispute that.
Sorry for standing on soapbox there, but...
No, I worked on that.
I'm not saying you didn't.
I, but I was a little shorthanded the last couple of years. But I think Brookings inherited, and it's also outside their city limits, so it's kind of a...
So, back in about December of two thousand eighteen, uh, we were trying to get a deal worked up with the Forest Service on a different property, Little Redwood Bar. That didn't work out. It's something we've tried to do numerous times. At that point, I basically took it upon myself to say, "Well, we can just build our own Little Redwood Bar." Uh, at that point, I took the director at the time out to the Social Security Bar, explained a bunch of things to him. I know Commissioner Boyce was involved in some form of that, while him and Director Tros were trying to work forward to that. Uh, things were moving forward, and then we found out DSL actually owned the Social Security Bar, the gravel bar, and that's when Tros pulled out.
Okay.
Uh, it's actually all in the...
Alright.
The August meeting. He mentioned that he didn't think they'd be on board with it. When I took over the department at the end of July, I made a phone call, and it turned out they were. So...
So can we move forward as a next step here to, to do a, prepare a proposal for them?
That's what I'm looking at, is to just get a consensus, to actually prepare a proposal, to see if we can vet this out through DSL.
Commissioner Boyce, are you fine with that?
Yeah.
So why don't we do that, then?
Then we're gonna load him up with McVeigh Park.
Um, I, I appreciate that. And if you wouldn't mind, I wanted to speak to you about something personally, see if you could hang out just a couple of minutes after the meeting.
Uh, I got something else.
He also has his quarterly report.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Is that up next, or is there something?
Yes, it is, that's...
Bye, Jim.
Yeah, we'll leave it there for right now. So, Curry County Parks Quarterly Report. Curry County Parks is a self-sufficient department, receiving no general fund allocation. Funding for salaries, materials, and services come from state RV licensing fees, our user occupancy fees, and we get a small amount from a reboard grant. It is a budget that needs to be treated very delicately. Since two thousand fourteen, revenues for the department have steadily been increasing. During this time, a large portion of that revenue increase was used to offset salary costs for another department. It limited our ability to use these funds for park development and repairs. There are many repairs currently needed within our parks. Uh, all directors are tasked with monitoring their budgets. My main concern with any sort of merger or reorganization changes within the Parks Department is that funding will again be used to offset salaries. This could adversely impact the ability of our department to expand and reinvest in its current campground facilities. It's actually a really exciting time in the Parks Department. It's a time for stepping forward, and things are running really well. We are on the cusp of expansion, expansion, real expansion, through our partnerships and development. This would provide, this would provide further outdoor recreational activities for our community, tourists, and continue the self-sufficient, self-sustaining nature of our funding, without running into a situation that requires general fund contribution. One thing you'll hear from any department head or any county employee that comes up to give any sort of report like this is we are always looking for ways to save money, protect our budgets, and cut cost. With the Parks Department, we have a lot of costs that are built in that we can't actually cut. Our main operating cost for the Parks Department outside of salaries would be our waste and disposal. We can't stop paying our trash bill. We can't stop paying our septic bill. Those increase with our usage increase. So that's one thing to consider. Our usage last year for the Curry County Parks at Boy'scope blew the roof off. Uh, we exceeded all expectations. But still, even though there are a lot of costs that we can't necessarily just get rid of, we can do what we can do to try and minimize those costs. Main way you minimize those costs continuously through any sort of facility maintenance type of thing is actually preventative maintenance. For example, this year going into the off-season, we had to replace several light fixtures at Boy'scope, switched them out to LED light fixtures, because they save on energy. Additionally, I contacted Coos Curry Electric, because I suspected that all our eighteen RV pedestals, if the breakers are on, would be drawing power even if nothing's hooked into them. They said that, yeah, it'd probably act like the similar to what a vampire appliance does. In case you guys aren't aware, a vampire appliance is like this TV, even though it's off, still sucks in power. So we went around and shut those power boxes off, and we shut them off when people leave type of thing, and it's better anyways, so that we don't just have open power boxes going. And then, the next big thing that anyone needs to really do, whether it's at your house, facility, is make sure you stay up on your water heaters. Uh, we emptied and drained the water heaters this year. Replaced one or two elements that were kind of looking like they probably weren't firing on all cylinders. So as of this year, compared March financials of this year to last year, even though we experienced such an increase in usage at these parks, to where it was the most busy we've probably ever been, we still cut our power use by twenty-nine percent, or twenty-two point nine percent.
Pretty good.
Saving us well over a thousand dollars a year moving forward. So, you know, that's just one thing. Preventative maintenance goes a long way, especially when that maintenance doesn't be allowed to stack up and continuously go down. Additional things that we did to kinda save money, uh, once we launched the online system, we needed to come up with ways to get the word out. Normally for Boy'scope Park, we'd print out a lot of brochures, and we put them in different areas, visitor centers all along the coast. These run sixty to ninety cents a piece, depending on how many we get. And we never really see much of a return on them. Uh, we don't get a lot of people pulling into a park saying, "Hey, I picked this up at the visitor's center." But we still needed something that we could give the campers when they come pull through, just to check the site out, to let them know we have an online reservation system. So I just made a little calling card instead. Uh, these are two cents a piece. Again, just a small thing, but it adds up quickly as more that you add. Uh, another thing that we got going on now, and this just recently happened, but it's a good thing, is all of two thousand eighteen, we had to do monthly water samples at Boy'scope Park and take those samples into Coos Bay. We were able to get back to quarterly water samples moving forward this year. Uh, by being on quarterly, it saves us approximately two hundred and eighty dollars a year. And that's not including the staff time for driving to Coos Bay and the vehicle use for driving to Coos Bay. So, again, another thing that is going forward with this Parks budget. We can't cut some of these things, but we can look for a way to minimize the cost of those. So, with Boy'scope Park, as far as occupancy fees went for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen fiscal year, prior to instituting the online reservation system, we were up approximately twenty-two percent from where we were last year. We estimated to be up about twenty percent. As of September of last year, we were up about twenty-six percent. But once we started our restroom remodel, we didn't have much of a shoulder season this year, because plenty of people didn't wanna do that, and we knew it was gonna happen. But we were still up twenty-two percent. Then we started the Boy'scope online reservation system. County Parks has been looking at trying to get a reservation system for a number of years at Boy'scope Park. Uh, when I took over, I actually followed through and got it up and going. And it started on January fourteenth. Prior to starting the reservation system, we knew that we'd end up with a reservation booking fee for our payment processor. Uh, basically, every time someone makes a transaction, it charges this fee. Additionally, we have the cost of running the actual reservation system from the site that we use. We instituted a ten-dollar reservation online fee. Uh, it's very similar to what many of the campgrounds were using. I basically surveyed between the Forestry State and a bunch of other campgrounds. They ranged between eight to fifteen dollars. I figured ten dollars would be pretty good, and it's not an amount that really hurts our customers. Uh, so with that being said, since yesterday, on the sixteenth, we took in approximately forty-three thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars gross since January, and we've netted approximately forty-one thousand dollars. So the payment processing fee has taken approximately two thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars. With the ten-dollar online reservation fee we added, we processed approximately two hundred and seventy-three transactions. So we've count, or taken in two hundred and seventy, or two thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars to help cover the cost of that fee. It actually leaves us with $570 left over from where we currently are. So moving down the list of where our fees are coming from, from the online system, our current online system costs about $600 a year to run and operate. That's how much we pay the company to house our system. Uh, so if you minus what we have left over from the payment process, that County Parks is at this point spending $25 for its entire reservation system. That's pretty good. It's almost paying for itself. I think the current fee amount appears to be at a really good spot. It's helping offset the cost of the system, and it is possible that a lot of our big reservations have been filled, uh, occupancy into July and everything like that. So it's possible now that that fee itself doesn't cover every type of transaction. Some of them are a little bit more, some of them are a little bit less. I do suspect by probably June, we will be neck and neck with what we've actually spent on this system. That being said, these numbers change every day. I pulled those yesterday. As of today, another $1,000 was added into our system. It's just the way it works. Some days you get one or two transactions come in, some days you get a rush of people, and it's working out really well. Another aspect of the online reservation system is it allows us to track real-time where we're making money for the different months of the year. I have a ton of reports that I can run. These reports let me, uh, see how many campers are actually at our campground, so we'll actually have some sort of figures this year. And additionally, I suspected that by having the reservation system, our fees were actually gonna be going, or our revenue was gonna go up. A lot of what we had was a booked reservation system. People would come in and say, "Oh, I wanna reserve this week." We'd put them in, they'd pay for one or two days, and then not pay for the rest of the time, or say, "Oh, I'm gonna pay." But it actually created a scenario where it was hard to really track down if everyone's paying. In this case, we've already exceeded June of 2018's month totals, uh, just off the reservation fees, and that's not counting all the people that are just gonna come in to take sites as they are available. So, moving forward. Boy's Cove Bathroom Remodel. I do have a small slideshow to show you guys. The remodel is complete.
Julie, if you need to go, you can go.
Yeah, I think I got about 10 minutes here.
So, the Boy's Cove Bathroom ADA Remodel, it is complete. Uh, we're just waiting on the final details and everything like that. It's, all the information's due into the state next month, and I'm working on that. But just to kind of go over it real quick, brief background, spring of 2017, Curry County Parks received a grant for rebuilding the ADA restroom at Boy's Cove Park. Ran into a lot of complications getting this project off the ground. We ended up deciding not to tear down the building and just do a remodel instead. State was on board with that. October 30th, we opened bids. Stumbo Construction was found to be the lowest responsible bidder, and in November, uh, the BOCA awarded the contract. We got the work in December. This is, pictures of some before and afters. This is before. Uh, the building had these plastic gutters that are all broken up, the roofing, painting, everything was all chipped up. Uh, it just really wasn't an aesthetically pleasing building. With the new building, we replaced the exterior, we replaced the roofing, did new paint, everything like that, and made sure that we were in compliance with different rules as far as the doors and everything. This is the back of the building. Before, we had spots that were completely rusted out. I apologize for some of these pictures. It's been very cloudy the last few days. Spots are completely rusted out all along this building. Again, the plastic gutters. We've added skylights to help offset operational costs of lights and everything like that, and plus they make it a lot nicer. The rust is actually all gone. It all got replaced when we were replacing the site, so that's good. Now for the interior.
Quick question, in the last picture I showed, I see the, um, septic lids there in plain view. Are those, um, locked?
Yeah, those are all locked. Uh, our septic provider is virtually the only person we have touch any of that stuff. We have a contractor with them. This is the interior of the men's restroom. The men's restroom was the worst of restroom.
Usually it always are.
As you can see, it has, it had rust all over the place. These were leaking for numerous years, uh, just really bad. We ended up installing vinyl paneling along this. It makes it so that's tough, hard. We can actually pressure wash it if we wanted to and need to get clean. We switched out from the stainless steel for cost reasons. Additionally, in my opinion, it kind of looks worse. I prefer these, they're easier to replace, and replacement costs on, on these are not as expensive. And realistically, barring someone doing something really foolish, they're gonna last 20 years.
That's what'll happen, though, with a hammer. Kids will come in with a hammer and bust it.
Yeah. Uh, we've never had that, but, you know, sure. We get, we got the floors redone. You can see they were all stained up and everything like that. So going from that, this is the men's restroom ADA stall that used to be there. Again, we had a huge rust issue here. There was actually a chlorinator pump with a chlorine reservoir that apparently had been leaking for quite some time that ate away both this interior and the exterior. Uh, additionally, this actual toilet wasn't a code. We have weird regulations, including toilet lids. Uh, they have to be open-faced. But you can see the floor was all tore up, everything like that.
I wonder why.
For men.
Weird, weird things you find out. Uh, but as you can see, we repaired all of the damage of the rust, got that all taken out, new backing, everything like that, and went back with the, I think it's called FRP.
So is that a concrete floor, just painted?
It's a concrete floor, and it is just painted. Tiling, restrooms, public restrooms, close to the ocean, is gonna just get mold, uh, throughout your grout and everything like that. They don't last as long. And in this case, we redid the floor, we added traction sand. That way, it cuts back on our slip and fall and everything like that.
Alrighty.
And then, we got the restroom stalls themselves. Again, right here, you can see the skylight. We don't have any lights on right now, and it really brightens the area up. The restroom stalls were retrofitted to allow this type of thing instead of the way it was. This is because when you've got an ADA restroom stall and you want someone with a wheelchair to go in there and access it, by having this door here instead of all the way back there, they have room to actually turn their wheelchairs around and get themselves to where they need to go. Uh, the previous way was to an older standard. Uh, it's similar to what you'll see throughout the county, but the newer standards have you doing this. Additionally, on the inside, we had these aluminum windows. They weren't privacy glass or anything. One of the main complaints we'd get about our restrooms is that they didn't have privacy glass. Campers don't like the idea of, and it's mainly kids running around and, you know, this turns into a fort during the summertime with water fights and stuff, uh, but the campers don't like the idea of people being able to watch them. We switched those out for vinyl windows, which help on better, they're better insulated, helps with the heating, everything like that, and they all have the privacy glass. The men's restroom and the women's restroom, same layout, same everything. I didn't see pictures of that. So the estimated cost summary. Reason I say it's estimated is I'm still waiting for the final bill to come in from Stumbo. He mailed it, but he didn't put the suite number on it, so it got returned to sender. So he just sent it in again, but we've got time for that. So, the original contract amount was for $90,000 to be built. We did run into one issue, we did an amendment to it, and the total contract amount should come out to $90,900. Additionally, there were $3,200 of other fees associated with this. With those other fees, one of the nice things about this grant is we were able to claim everything virtually we spent. The majority of that other fee is the temporary Santa cans that were delivered to keep the campground open while the construction was going. That's where the majority of that fee comes from. And then, uh, the next highest part would have been like the solicitation and advertisements for the different newspapers. All of that could be bundled into this grant. With the grant, we used a Oregon State Parks Opportunity Grant. The state paid 75% of this amount, so the estimated amount the state is kicking in on this is $70,575. Curry County Parks had to do a 25% match. It comes out to $23,525. So that's how that match gets broken down with the way that the grant worked. One of the nice things about state RV licensing fees and how they set it up is that it opened up this thing called the, or the County Opportunity Grants. Oregon State Parks has a lot of grants out there for all sorts of different projects. The County Opportunity Grant is one that is solely for counties to go for. So it's competitive, but not as competitive as other grants where anybody can go for it. So, taking what we had, the original budget for this was $150,000 because we were looking at replacing the entire building and everything like that. So the County Parks actually set aside $37,500 for this project. You take it away from what it is, and you're gonna end up with about $13,975 coming back to the Parks Fund from what we had established. The project in itself is completed. Like I said, we're just waiting on the final documents to come in and get it into the necessary authorities. But, we're good to go. Campers are happy, County Parks are happy with it, uh, our contractor did a great job with it, and we got it done very quickly, uh, considering our contractor was based out of Roseburg, and for two weeks, he ended up without power due to the snow and everything like that.
Alright.
So that's County Park, uh, remodel. Moving on down the list, Boy's Cove Propane Exchange is now gonna be offered. Looking for ways to increase what we can offer our campers, I started looking into the prospect of doing Boy's Cove, uh, propane exchange, similar to what you see with the blue stars outside of stuff. All looked out, worked out good to where now we'll be able to offer propane, uh, services, just exchanging tanks. Our campers that come there and stay for two weeks at a time, campers that are just coming in, I think it's gonna be a big asset to them to be able to swap tanks out without having to go to like Fred Meyer and pull their trailers in. We make a little bit off of this to help offset the cost of everything else, so there is gonna be some revenue that gets generated to help offset, but it's not something that we're really like expecting a lot off of compared to what it kind of costs to do it. But, it is a nice little thing we can add for our campers for convenience, and it helps increase revenue, and even any increase is a welcome to increase. So, moving on, Lobster Creek Camp. This time of year, we're doing a lot of, I'm doing a lot of brush removal. Normally, we weed all the way down the road and everything like that. Over the years, coming into the road hasn't been much of a focal point, so it's created a lot of blind spots. I've been going through and cutting those blind spots out to make it so that when campers are driving down, they can actually see what's around the corner. It's amazing, you cut two feet of brush on one side of the road and it opens up 40 feet of view. Uh, so that's the main thing going on as far as brush removal out there. Trails need cleared, we've got a lot of trees down, but once the seasonal staff start, we'll be able to knock those out super quick. Lobster Creek Floor Improvements. Lobster Creek Camp needs a lot of work. It's, Boy's Cove's been the moneymaker, and that's where the money's been going. Lobster Creek hasn't been treated as nicely. With that being said, it needs to be, because...
Josh, about how much longer do you have, just so I know?
I'm not sure. Is there a time limit on this?
No, no, I'm just asking. If you're gonna be much longer, I wanna take a five-minute break.
Uh, maybe you should just go ahead and take that five-minute break, 'cause you guys might have...
'Cause we've got maintenance coming in behind you as well, so...
Uh, he mailed his in because, unless he is actually, didn't come in.
Alright, we're gonna take a five-minute break.
Yeah, it's quality.
If you're only your best when you can play more than you work, if inspiration comes from the outside, you belong in Curry County. The westernmost point of the land you love, and the edge between familiar and uncharted. Break the pattern. Be where the airports are as close as the beaches, and industry and recreation never cease to amaze. Dock, dive, and dine in a single day, and never lose your connection. This is the threshold of the West. Live where you can do you, and do it well, at the farthest point from ordinary. Curry County, living on the edge.
We have these parks which are set up to protect and preserve biodiversity. That's challenging under any circumstances. But it certainly is almost impossible if you don't know what the actual biodiversity that's in your park or the area that you're trying to conserve is.
A bio blitz is a celebration of biodiversity. Biodiversity is the variety of life in an area. We don't know how much life and what types of life are here at Critter Lake National Park. The big, obvious things, we know about. But, a bio blitz is where we go out and look for a particular type of organism. This year, we're looking for beetles, or the order Coleoptera.
The wealth of biodiversity that are in these parks, 99% of it is something that could fit in your hand.
We can't save what we don't know exists. So, if there's a beetle species out there that's very important, and we don't know about it, we can't do anything to help it. That is the ultimate goal of the bio blitz. It's a way that citizens can come here. We have volunteers that are here who are actually giving this information. They're using their time to help the scientists build a greater picture of what kind of beetles are here in this park.
Getting this sort of baseline data of what biodiversity is there, not only shows us what's there, which is just intrinsically interesting for its own purpose, but it also begins to set a baseline, and that baseline dataset is what we then can use, and not just scientists, but the general public and those land managers, the stakeholders in that bio blitz, can use those observations then on into the future to understand if things are changing.
It's not so much about counting number of species, it's more about seeing a fuller picture of the biodiversity. And the biodiversity is the variety of different types of organisms, different types of species.
I do believe that in their past bio blitzes, that they have expanded the number of things they now had recorded from the park, but also confirmed that some of the things that were reported historically are still present. So even if it's not a new discovery for the park, it still creates another piece of data that tells us, yes, that thing still lives here and is still thriving, or maybe struggling, but, but we begin to learn something about it. I think that has an intrinsic value to the park for its long-term future, but it also just has an intrinsic social value. When you ask questions about why do we have these parks, and there's lots of ways to answer that question, but one of them is that the parks are these areas where we, where we go to appreciate the wildlife there, and this is a way of tapping into some of that wildlife at all sorts of different levels. One of the key things besides the biology that's involved in these bio blitzes is the interaction with the public and the opportunity to educate the public about it.
So, uh, as I was saying, Lobster Creek just hasn't had much of an investment over the last few years. Main money that we have at the parks has been going to Boy's Cove, and it's kind of fell into the wayside. To the point to where it's affecting whether our visitors are even coming back to Lobster Creek. So these are the A-frame floors. And of course...
Down on the bottom bar. Oh, sorry.
Every system's different. This is the eating area for the A-frame floor. For years, water gets into this camp, water gets into the A-frame, it chips away this paint. This is actually just basic latex exterior house paint. They were just painting over the top of it every year. If you paint over the top of paint that's already chipped up, it's just gonna continuously chip up. Additionally, you know, if you're just using the wrong kind of paint, it doesn't really work out that well. The paint sticks to the, was sticking to your shoes, like the chips, as you were going in and going out. So we were running into situations to where these groups that would be going up there for like weddings and whatnot, for one, they'd review the site prior and say, "No, I can't have this in my wedding pictures." For two, they'd run into a scenario to where they'd end up with paint chips on their wedding dresses. So that's something nobody wants, and...
So you're not getting to many weddings, is that what you're saying?
Uh, not at the moment. As a matter of fact, every time I've taken anyone up there to show them since I started, we haven't actually gotten their confirmation, largely due to the A-frame. This is the kitchen floor. Again, just all messed up. So, this is the nice area for fireplace, everything like that. Virtually, the entire floor is in the similar state. So this winter, I went ahead and sanded, scraped, and did everything I could to get the paint that was on there, six some odd coat layers, off of that floor. I then went through and repainted it with actual concrete floor paint. I added epoxy, an epoxy sealant to it to help water protect it, and this is what we're left with now. Uh, I chose that color just to help brighten up the interior of the A-frame, makes it a little bit warmer, instead of just the dirt brown.
So you did this work yourself?
I did. Uh, at the beginning, I was lucky enough to have a seasonal employee, oh, who's coming back this season, and he helped me with a lot of the sanding for about half of it, and the rest of it was just me. Uh, I will tell you, these tables is part of the reason why these floors themselves get chipped up. They're about 500 pounds, and they are extremely difficult to move, especially to move after you've painted one half of the floor. So you can see all the way through, it's a drastic difference. Uh, you can walk in there now, clean it up easier, it doesn't stick to your floor, feet, anything like that. Kitchen area, it's unrecognizable as opposed to what it is, so that's just a little bit of... So that's just a little bit of time, energy, effort, and paint. I mean, it's not that much. It's just a matter of doing it. This is the new area that looks like where you get to have your fire and everything. It looks very inviting with the orange, it looks homey, it looks warm. It's not something to where I'm worried about people going in there, having paint chips on their shoes or anything like that. And yep, so that's the A-frame floor. That was a larger project I did over the winter.
What the cost on that besides your...
Besides mine, probably about four hundred dollars between the sandpaper and the paint. I mean, very low cost.
Did you have a buffer?
Uh, we have one in facilities. I went and ordered a sand screen for it, but it still took forever. Those aren't the only painted floors at Lobster Creek. We have cabins A and B. This is their floors, they were in actually a lot worse shape. Again, sticks to your shoes, this is where staff for our different 4H groups will stay, we'll put campers in here. They couldn't put their clothing or anything like that on the ground without the floor sticking and everything like that. So again, that was cabin A, this is cabin B, similar condition, just all tore up. Instead of just painting over it, this is what it currently looks like, cause it's too wet for me to go up there and paint it. In this case, I just took a scraper. This floor was so bad that I sprayed it with water and hit it with the scraper and it came right off. But I used a hand scraper to just get all of this off in both sides of the cabins. They're ready to go to be repainted. We've got plenty of time between now and our next group coming up to do that. It's just too wet this time of year to actually do that type of work. So that's gonna take care of the floor issue, at least for the next year or so. I do suspect that we do continuously have water issues of getting into the cabins, I'll go, not the cabins, but the A-frame, I'll go over that in a little bit.
What I wanted to tell you on these floors, and trust me, I've had some experience with this as well, we did a couple of large floors this way, if you sand them down, there's an acrylic, it's basically an acrylic sealer, but it's got epoxies built into it as well. So you buff the, you buff the concrete out and then you put this acrylic down and you buff it back out and it's basically buffed concrete floors.
Yeah.
And they'll, they'll last forever that way.
Yeah, preferably, in an ideal world, they never would've painted the floors. They would've just left it as concrete and sealed them up as concrete and we wouldn't be in these scenarios. Even trendy-wise, concrete countertops, concrete floors are actually a big thing that's going on in our current housing market. People are really looking forward to that. That's the more modern look.
Yeah, and they're just sealed, sealed with a simple epoxy and they buff them.
Yeah, and to get this back to concrete takes a whole lot more work.
There's actually a gel you can spray on that and it'll peel it right up to nothing, so...
But, so that's my next thing for those cabins is to get those floors taken care At this point, we'll just go through Lobster Creek's current condition and where we're gonna go with the campground for the next budgeted year. One thing we have is, things were breaking and not being repaired. Things were with them breaking, not being repaired at the time of them breaking, you end up with multiple things being left over. You could take something that would've been a fifty-dollar fix at the time, let it sit, and now you're dealing with a few hundred, several thousand dollar fix. So we need to break that cycle as a Parks Department, we need to reinvest in our campgrounds. Like I said, we have lost a lot of reservations and a lot of what we hear is the facilities. So we need to fix them. Right as this, this is our, I had these all flipped on mine. So this is the Adirondack cabins that we have. When I took over this summer, these cabins, for the most part, didn't have any sort of screening doors, anything like that, they're just open lean-to cabins. Four of them did have doors. Between June or a little into July, we were able to build up screen doors at least for four other ones. The only ones that don't have screen doors at this point have concrete foundations, so it, we just didn't have time to put them in. Moving forward, our plan is to finish this project probably soon as the seasonal staff starts. This costs us virtually nothing beyond hinges. We have wood available to the Parks Department. When we had our large donation from the ranch out in Montana, they brought over several hundred feet of redwood two-by-fours and everything like that. So we've had this just lying around, it's just a matter of putting it to work. So that's what almost all the doors out there look like now. Another thing, these are just kinda base frames, we can add on to these, we can improve these, we can shore them up. This is cabin number six. This is kinda representative of what a lot of our cabins look like. They all need a coat of paint. Interior-wise, there's some boards that need replaced on the bunk areas. Our bunk areas for these cabins are just plywood things with bunks built in. It's similar to what you see at most youth camps. We did reach out to the outdoor schools programs that they're doing to find out kinda what they're looking for to come back, and they're looking for something that's a little bit better for the staff and the kids to be sleeping on besides just the pine wood floors. Problem we have is anything we put with padding, it's gonna get eaten by some sort of animal. But our roofing on several of these cabins are just tarped, it's not aesthetically pleasing at all. The roofs need redone on multiple cabins. Some of our cabins have nice metal roofing and everything like that. So these are things that we need to do in order to keep this campground going and make it aesthetically pleasing and entice people to come back. It's a marvelous location, amazingly scenic facility, but these are things that when you take someone down to review whether they wanna have a two-week stay there, they key in on. Moving down the list, and probably one of the biggest problems we have at Lobster Creek right now is there are eight broken windows within the A-frame facility. From what I've heard, this is happening due to crows during their mating season, they see their reflection in the grass and they attack it. I suspect that it's more than...
They think they're fighting another male.
Yeah, so that might play a part. I also know that there's like pea gravel right here, so I think people have been mowing or weed eating right there and that's probably attributing to it. These windows have been broken for years, just never been addressed. I did get a quote from a contractor to go up there and redo the glass, I think it was around thirteen hundred dollars. Again, this is the type of thing that when a window breaks, if you could just pull it out, take it down to a contractor, you're looking at fifty, fifty bucks, you know, to get it replaced, not that big of a stopgap. But again, when people are coming in, they don't want broken windows in their wedding photos. So we need to be investing into this campground to get this stuff back up and going. And I do have a point to all this. Don't worry. Nice floors...
Do you have a list of all your old customers so you can go back and say, hey, here's the...
Absolutely. Basically, we're gonna spend this season, our reservations are down, we're actually gonna be working a lot up there because we need to get our reservations back up. Once you complete a project, you blast it out through social media, send an email campaign to all of our normal people, let them know, hey, come on back. We lost, you know, one of our 4H groups over the year just because of these type of things, they found a facility. Nobody can beat our pricing, cause we're very low on pricing.
Well, I know my church group doesn't go back there anymore, they used to go there every year.
Yeah, but our facilities are another thing. So with our facilities, this OSP plywood is what it looks like on the inside walls of the A-frame. I believe these were put in as like a temporary stopgap type thing, they just never got finished. There's a few options on the table for what to do with this type of thing. We could paint it, but then you end up with this weird textured look from the OSP, way it's kinda tiled out. My recommendation for this is actually just to do wood paneling on it. We can get wood paneling, four-by-eight sheets, anywhere from ten to twenty dollars. We need about twenty-five of them. So realistically, to get this paneled out on both sides and turn this into a nice lodge looking facility, we're looking, you know, low-end two-seventy-five, high-end four-fifty, just the materials and to put them in, it's just glue and finishing nails. It's not a big project at all. Again, one of those types of complaints I've heard when I've taken people up there is it reminds them of the indoor of a shed, which makes me laugh, cause I've got a wood shed at my house and it's got the OSP on the inside. It's the right kinda construction material for this because of the weather, the water and everything like that, it's just, it was initially supposed to be covered over, never got happened done. Again, we've got another view of, you know, more of the broken windows, same plywood walls, it's on both sides. It's reasonable, easy, and should just be taken care of and will be, that's what we're doing. This is our fire suppression system for our natural gas range. For the last two years, our fire guy that goes up and does our yearly inspections to make sure all of our fire extinguishers are working and everything, has been saying that this is gonna be reaching its end of life real quickly and it needs replaced. So that's one thing we have to look forward to coming forward. This year, he said that it might be that time, he has to check to make sure the dates are right because the codes are changing and he's not able to work on some of these systems. So we may end up with an expensive replacement of this system. I'm not sure what that looks like at this point, just...
That's just the charge system, right?
Yeah, yeah.
They're not, they're not that expensive.
Yeah, it's just one of those things that comes up and we need it replaced.
Wouldn't be Gary Pickett by chance, would it?
He would.
Okay.
This is our fireplace at Lobster Creek Camp. One of the things we've been trying to do for several years is build an off-season. We've reached out to hunting groups, reached out to church groups, we have a discount at a hundred and seventy-five dollar a night, you get the whole camp off-season rate. We're not getting much back from that. Large part of the reason, we can't keep our facilities warm. Lobster Creek Camp and the A-frame has one fireplace. Upstairs has no heat source whatsoever. We have portable buddy heaters that we provide for the campers to use to try and heat them, but it really isn't the best. Additionally, with the fireplace, you have to have the propane generator on to get the most use out of it, cause it's got an electric blower attached. I've currently reached out to a couple of different companies like Blue Star that did our generator and stuff to see what it would cost to install a propane fireplace in there so that it would be on-demand, you don't have to be running the propane generator, you don't have, you could set it at low, heat the whole place up, as well as install a propane fire, they have ventless propane fireplaces that could be installed upstairs or just installing a heater. That's the type of thing that our off-season guests or even some of our summer guests, depending on the weather, it gets cold up there, that's the type of amenity they'll be looking for, easy to use, turn the thermostat up and you actually have heat. We had one group go up for Christmas this year, they were amazing, they were great. They used the fireplace and kept it as warm as they could, but they were still cold. It didn't hurt their experience, just because they're the type of people that knew what they were getting into. Other groups that have gone up there come back down on a Monday and you look at them and they are just haggard. So you never know what to expect from what people are used to. But this is something that is more expensive as far as these other things that I've talked about, but it's the type of thing that we can add that could actually increase revenue over time and is a simpler thing to use.
Have you gotten any estimates on those, the amount of BTUs?
Not yet. I actually ran into Blue Star guy earlier today because he was getting a permit for something and they're looking into it, they've just got all their yearly stuff going on.
You know AA here, it's got some good prices on those, they put two in for me not long ago and they were only a few thousand dollars each and they were a pretty large BTU.
Yeah, and I'm sure they were just...
Got a little hand remote, you just click the button.
Yeah, and that's what, you know, our users are looking for when they're up there, no one wants to have to figure out how to go chop wood if they're not used to it.
I'd get, I'd get some competitive pricing on that, cause you might find huge differences.
Yeah, it's the type of thing you generally are looking and shopping around, two or three different things, but... This is where our water issue comes from. This is one of the main things that we need to get addressed at Lobster Creek for the A-frame facility. They built this facility at the bottom of the hill on top of the creek, which is beautiful, but all the water comes down the hill into the side of this facility. This pipe goes out this way, got some nice old culvert here and then cuts back this way. From here to where it actually goes the rest of the way, it's collapsed. I don't know when it's not been collapsed, but, so what happens is, water comes pouring down here, floods this whole area, and then it seeps through the concrete foundation, cause it's sitting there for time after time, and that's what's really tearing into our concrete floors. Additionally, with the way the A-frame is set up, this pipe itself isn't wide enough. When water pours down off of the side of the A-frame here, it lands in a spot in between where the pipe drainage is and where the building is, so it pools up right there. That's why I took this, one of our cabins years ago broke, a tree fell on it, so we had some metal roofing laying around, I cut and just busted these in to make it more of a gutter system for that, so that we could actually get the water into the pipe the way it's supposed to go and not sit up. That worked for a little bit, but when we end up with a lot of rain, it just overflows aside anyways.
Can I give you a suggestion on that one too?
Absolutely.
The old way to do that would be to come about four, three or four feet off the building, about where your arrow is right now?
Uh-huh.
And dig an arrow, it's called an Asian drain, and you dig down about three feet and you put the big six-inch corrugated pipe in there, you fill it in with gravel and then you top it with some black pa, uh, some black road netting. And all you gotta do is rake it off about once a year and you'll never have water against that building again.
We will definitely look into that.
And it's cheap to put in, it's about three loads of rock for that size building and some...
And what was it, you called it?
It's an Asian drain, every, pretty much any contractor in Northwest knows what an Asian drain is.
So yeah, there's a variety of ways to fix this.
Yeah, and that's a cheap way and it's aesthetically pleasing and all you, the only maintenance of it is, once a year, like I said, you're gonna go in, all them leaves are there, you're gonna wanna rake them off or blow them off with a blower and that thing will work like a...
As far as like a simple fix goes, we really just need to go grab a portable auger and run it through and just open the pipe back up, I mean, that will at least allow the drain.
You'll have to dig down three feet, huh? About three feet, through, past the foundation.
This is a picture I took during the last rainstorm, it illustrates what I was talking about. The water on the pipe itself is filled up to the point where it's bummed or bermed over. You can actually see that, you know, the roof comes down to about right here, so it does pool in. It's just furthering the idea, this is, you know, what causes the floors to get the way they are. So I suspect, maybe in a year or so, the floors are gonna be needing readdressed just because it's gonna be underwater, although we got the sealant on it, you never know how long it's gonna last when it actually lives its life underwater. And then we got this part, this is at the kitchen. There's no drain whatsoever that was put in right where the kitchen area is. Again, same thing, water pools up, it drains into the kitchen through the seepage of the concrete. In this case, when this happened, when I was on-site, I just went ahead and dug a ditch back out, to leach it out, and you know, just kinda grated to where, so the pool of water left and it's flowing out a different spot now and it's nowhere near any of the facilities and it's not leaking into the building. But we should put in some variation of a pipe here to make sure that it continuously does that. Moving on down the line, this is a weird system. This is our fume hood for the propane stove, basically you're cooking, you turn on your vent to let things go out. But it doesn't actually go out the building, it's actually just goes up to the top story of the A-frame and stops. So I don't know, there are, there is a square right there that looks like at one point it exited the building through the roof like it probably should. In this case, I think I just need to look at one of the ventless systems, you can buy ventless pro, or things for that, that aren't horribly expensive at all, under fifty dollars, and it just runs off of power, just like this does, you turn it on, there's no vent, it circulates it and gets rid of it. And then we'd be able to possibly remove this and open this area up even more. That's, you know, there's a lot of strange stuff when you got older buildings.
The bottom one, you're telling us is a mess.
Uh, not necessarily a mess, but it definitely needs attention. These are the skylights to the A-frame. So when the Parks Department was taken over by the Juvenile Department, the A-frame actually had a false ceiling in the second story. Ken Dukey at the time was the director, he went in and I talked to him about it, he said he had about thirty days to get something going. Every critter under God lived underneath or in that false ceiling, so they took it all out and exposed these skylights. His plan was to go back in and frame these in, go over the roof, cause they don't really add much, they add a little bit of light, and then just have it re-roofed to make sure that we don't have a problem. Currently with these skylights, we get occasional leaks that are coming through, just because they probably need resealed or they've deteriorated, they may be as old as the building itself.
That's just fiberglass, right?
Yeah, yeah. So that's also not the best...
Even, even the really expensive UV stuff, leaves and stuff, tree branches are gonna blow up, they, they scar and fade in just a couple of years, I mean, they're basically useless.
My recommendation for this, we do have several contractors, we've viewed them in the past for roofing, one of them does a lot of this type of stuff, would be to frame this in and just close it off so that we'd never have an issue with it, that's the plan. As of the moment, we don't have much of a leak, depending on wind direction is where we get it. So it's a small incidental thing, when it's raining and I'm up there, I make sure that nothing's pooling up or anything like that. This is the A-frame roof, there's just some nails, I'll show you that in a second. It's a better picture. So again, with the A-frame, when Director Dukey went through, they did a lot of good things with this top story, they switched out the linoleum flooring, it's holding up well, there's a few cracks, but that's fine, it's not that big of a deal to replace linoleum... to replace linoleum as you go. But these were just nothing. This is where the false ceiling was. Again, they didn't have much time and they had a limited budget, so they stuck up the OSP plywood. He told me that, you know, that was kind of just a temporary thing just to get through. Just nothing got done after that. With the upstairs here, you know, we could always do the paneling. We could do some sort of vinyl sheeting. With this being on what it is, it's basically just a bunkhouse for kids and everything. I'd recommend just painting it. I'm not really worried about the textured effect or anything like that. Painting it, you know, we're talking maybe five gallons of paint type of a thing. Painting OSP plywood's a little different than painting regular plywood, so you got to do a couple of steps. But, you know, simple thing. If you've got the paint, it's not expensive. Just takes a couple of hours, and, you know, all of a sudden, it looks actually nice and not like a barn. Additionally, we could look into extending the plywood all the way back up just to kind of make it uniformed and nicer. This is where those nails were. You can see the nails sticking through the roof. I don't get a lot of complaints about that, but I have complaints about, you know, just, it doesn't look aesthetically And then there's a few incidental things. This is one of the bridges. There's some boards that need replaced. We've got the lumber. It's just a matter of replacing it. So that'll be done shortly. And then we get to the nurses' cabin. This is where we have some real issues. The nurses' cabin is a two-bedroom, one-bath cabin. It used to have propane hooked up to it with propane heaters, propane hot water heater. At some point, the propane pilot lights kept turning off. They couldn't figure out what the deal was, and they suspected that, you know, there was some leak. They shut the power or propane off to it and switched it over to an electrocott water heater. And then that's why we got the buddy heaters was to use to heat the cabins. Last time I was up there at Blue Star when we were putting the generator in, I got stuck in Lobster Creek a while back. We had them look at it. They said that you probably don't have a leak. It was probably your regulator, which would have been a pretty simple replacement type thing. And so this year, one thing I'd like to do is get propane reestablished to that and get those propane heaters up and going and get it back to on-demand hot water heater.
Did they fix it?
No, because we didn't have the budget.
But it's, well, it's only a little thorough couple, I think. It's just a little-
Yeah, it's just a thing. I mean, the problem is if they fixed it now, then we would have a leak because we don't have propane hot water heater sitting there, and there's parts missing off.
They can just pressure test the line for leaks, too, so that's-
Yeah, that's basically what the plan was. We were going to go up there, have it pressure tested, verify that, okay, there is no leak. It's just this regulator. Swap it out type of a thing. It's just more bringing it back up to the standard that our customers used to be accustomed to when they were staying overnight. One thing we do have is off-season rates. Those off-season rates allow people to rent this cabin for fifty dollars a night. Someday during, you know, Friday the thirteenth, I'm probably going to rent it to go watch scary movies. Seems like it could use my time.
Fifty a night.
To put a haunted house there and not have to do much at all.
Yeah, we've looked at that. But, so, you know, this is the A-frame cabin. We have this great porch on the A-frame. One thing I'd really like to see, a lot of Lobster Creek can't be turned into ADA-accessible facilities because of the steepness of the grade. I would like to see about getting, you know, future project to turn this to have ADA accessibility, basically get something engineered off of one side of this porch to provide a ramp, and then we'll figure it out with the grounds around it to make sure that we could get guests that do have wheelchairs into that facility. We have had people in the past that, you know, were limited in mobility and everything like that, and they weren't able to stay in the facility that they probably should have been staying at because they couldn't get up the steps. So that's just one of those long-term things. It's an expensive project to get that thing actually done. It's another, oh, I just flipped that myself. We're good. So moving on down the list with the nurses' cabin. This is the nurses' cabin. Both sides of the cabin are kind of switched. They looked the exact same. We've got these nice beds in there. It's really pretty, a little bit of floor. But this is what you see when you lay down on the bed. That's the roof directly above the bed. The nurses' cabin has had a leak for three or four years. It's, needs, when I talked to one of our contractor friends about it, he said it's a metal roof that it probably doesn't need replaced. It needs resealed and reseamed. At the time, he estimated he could do it for around a grand. Obviously, we'll shop that around, but this needs done. This leak actually drops water, so it makes a situation to where if it's raining, not good, and the leak spreads. Anytime you have any sort of leak, you never know where it's going to go, especially depending on wind flow. Once the leak is repaired, repairing this is simple. That's just a piece of, what is that, plywood? You know, we can either sand it if it looks good enough, reseal it, everything like that.
You could texture paint it.
Huh?
You could just texture paint it.
Yeah, or just pop it out and replace it with like a fifteen-dollar piece of wood and repaint it.
How, how big is this cabin?
Uh, square footage-wise, I'm not sure. It's a two-bedroom, both sides, and then-
Just so you know, I mean, to, for a thousand dollars to repair the roof, you could probably almost replace it for that. Metal is really cheap.
Yeah, we'd look into all the options.
Screw guns that they got. I mean, you can run a sheet in in a minute.
But we can't do much to make this nicer without getting it actually fixed.
Right.
As you go through the cabin, you see more leaks, more issues going just because the roof is the way it is. The rest of the cabin outside of the roof isn't bad. These walls are just barren wood. We could paint it, no big deal. The flooring in the cabin's baseboard, someday we could add some variation of nicer flooring. The restroom works well. There's no big issues with it. It's just this roof itself definitely needs addressed, and my preference would be to get it addressed this year because I don't see the point in continuously letting this deteriorate.
That doesn't look that big.
Yeah, it's not. So that's what Lobster Creek Camp kind of looks like right now. Those are the projects that I'm going to be looking to work forward or work on going forward in the future. I'm adjusting the budget to an actual point to where we're able to reinvest in our campgrounds and fix these type of facilities. And we kind of have, you know, an obligation to the public to fix these things and keep them up and going, especially when a campground like Lobster Creek Camp, with what it gets us from our state RV licensing fees, pays for itself. We need to do something drastic. As far as Lobster Creek going forward, one project I've talked about to kind of make it more profitable, it's used for youth camps. Most of these youth camps charge five hundred to a thousand dollars to have their kids go out to a camp every year. We'd need to look into a lot of the rules and regulations requirements around it, but a lot of county park systems that have facilities like this throw their own youth camps. The numbers would look really well if we were taking twenty to fifty kids up there once or twice this summer just to fill in our own gaps in our calendar and having our own youth camp. It would be pretty profitable. It would turn that campground into a completely different place. That being said, it's a lot of organization. You got to get a lot of buy-in from the community, and you got to get a lot of parents and everyone else to volunteer. So that's just one of those large forward-thinking things that we should really start looking forward to with Lobster Creek, changing the focus from reliance on the youth camps that are coming in, family reunions or anything like that, and creating our own programming. Other things going on real quick. That's the main part of that. With that, we are not hiring a camp host this year at Lobster Creek Camp. The camp is generally ran without a camp host. Some years we get them, some years we don't. In this case, due to the low reservations and everything like that, we'll run without a camp host because it's not worth it to us affordable-wise. So not that big of a deal. We adjust. Yeah, it happens. We're working on possibly updating the county park regulations. We have our set regulations. There's some old regulations, twenty-some-odd years old type of a thing. We need to revamp them, stuff like that, and add wording that makes it easier for the code enforcement officer to do stuff in the campgrounds. That'll be coming before you guys here shortly in a workshop. We'll just get it scheduled out. Next thing, we are looking to hire a youth worker for this year. Every year, we hire one kid for our county park system, or we hire two kids for the county park system. Normally, youths in the community to work in our campgrounds. This year, one of our kids is coming back for like his fourth season, so that's really cool to be able to have that type of help. He's very trustworthy, knows what he's doing. I can send him out to do something at Lobster Creek and then tell him to shoot down the boys, and I know he's going to do it. So we need one extra kid. I've reached out to the juvenile department and the schools. It looks like the juvenile department has a kid that they kind of think might be a good fit for this. So it's one of those still tie-ins that we have to where, you know, we're trying to help out a kid in the community, provide an opportunity for them to, you know, gain some valuable knowledge, experience, stuff for college applications, and give him something to do over the summer. So I actually think that'll probably be coming before you guys at some very time, too, once we get another kid onsite. Other things we do with schools, we started a partnership last year with Brookings Harbor High School, and it's kind of a thing to where we had all these fire pits, the standing barbecues. We took them out of boy's coat because people's trailers needs have changed where now they have pop-outs. But then we had all these things left over, so we took them into the high school, and they use it in their welding shop to build us new fire rings out of those standing barbecues. And pretty cool. They charge us the cost of materials. They love the projects. It's been working well. It's a very easy, cheap, affordable way for us to continue. For example, we had ten of them done last year, and I think it cost us five hundred dollars to get that brand-new delivered from an actual place. You're looking at two thousand dollars. And it's good for the kids to learn this type of stuff. Next and final thing, parks committees. We have a Curry County Parks Committee. It has had two meetings so far, January second and April third. The Parks Committee, its first meeting, spent a lot of time just talking about what it is to be a Parks Committee, what are we doing moving forward and everything like that. And right now, as of the third meet, or April third, we started looking at master planning. Part of the reason the Parks Committee was created was to kind of work on the master plan for the Curry County Parks Department. Last meeting, we went over all the different properties that are either put aside for possible development, have been talked about park development, or is still kind of somewhat parks properties to weird ways. Next meeting, we're going to pretty much break down which ones look feasible to actually develop into campgrounds and which ones look feasible to do other things with or what we should do with them. So the main reason I went over the repairs needed at Lobster Creek Camp wasn't to, you know, scare you guys about the condition up there. It's been brought before the board a few times that there is the possibility of being able to sell some properties and have those funds go into the Parks Department for repair and maintenance, or repair and maintenance, I forget the other thing, but-
Anyway.
Repair, maintenance, development, and acquisition. There's plenty of repair and maintenance need done in our campgrounds alone. As far as parks' master planning goes, the acquisition and development, that's extremely important for us. If we were to identify properties for possibly listing for sale, that's where those funds should be going, and that's where I'd intend for those funds to be going is back into the parks. When you're talking about kind of a weird loophole that could take money out of the special districts as opposed to the normal process, it's good for the public to know that, well, that happens, but it's going back into something you can enjoy, which one of the weird things that you find universal across pretty much any form of politics is people like outdoor recreation, especially in Oregon.
Right.
So that's what I got.
Thank you, Josh. Good presentation. Appreciate it. And if we could give Josh just a minute to leave, I have something that I would like to ask, and I, it's kind of of a personal nature, so I don't want to, uh-
Why don't you go to your office so we can sit here and-
Not with Josh, don't know.
Oh, I'm sorry.
With the board.
Joking around. Oh, excuse me. I thought you wanted to talk to Josh.
No, I've already asked him what I asked, what I needed to ask him.
Josh, congrats on your Parks Advisory Committee.
You're the one that pushed it through.
Well, it's, I think you got some good people, and I think you're leading them good.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thanks.
Get the door shut? No, it's fine. I just wanted to ask Commissioner Gold something. I forgot to ask you this morning, and forgive me for that. I was just asked by, by someone, and I'd like to know if you knew that Ms. Doddard was going to file that ethics charge against me.
No, I didn't.
Okay, that's good to know. All right, thank you. This workshop is adjourned.